They won't be able to hear unless we broadcast. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Northampton Township Board of Supervisors Special Meeting today, Wednesday, November 10, 2021. The order will start with a Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence. Sorry, we still have no volume out here.
My microphone on. Can you test it now? Do you have volume out there? Testing? Thank you. Can you hear us out there yet?
Any volume yet?
Is there any volume out there?
No.
Still no volume? Alright, we'll double check it before we get rolling. Still no... Still no volume at all? I think they're gonna come down and look at it. We'll just sit tight for a second and we'll get it going for you. Yeah, we're working on making sure everybody can hear it. We're not gonna get started until everybody can hear the meeting properly. Thanks for your patience, guys. Technology can be a glitch sometimes. For those watching live, whatever media, we're working on some technical issues here with the sound. So, thanks for your patience. We should get started in a minute. Still no...still no sound? Okay, thanks. So, one of the TVs does have volume? Okay, the room at the end has volume, but the TV in the lobby does not? Is that the issue? And are they working on it? Okay, I can't see, sorry.
You guys always go to the feel-good, to reside in the feel-good. On Sunday, we had a rally down in the old Wawa parking lot. It was really a very big success. People brought food. It shows the community come out. We stood on the road as a feel-good. And a lot...I bet you fifty percent of cars were honking with thumbs up because they're sick and tired of living on buildings that are full of noise. Do whatever they want to do, wherever they want to do. And people finally standing up and saying, "It's wrong." In other municipalities, we shouldn't see their fight, we can talk. They're fighting. The supervisors in other municipalities...
How's the sound out there now? We got it, Bill? Dave working on it a little bit? Okay, sorry, folks.
Well, since we're talking about feel-good, I hope everyone remembers that this weekend, the police are collecting food for...as a...for people over Thanksgiving who don't have. If you look at the flyer, it has all the different foods. And you can add a gift certificate so the person who gets it can go out and buy a turkey. Please remember that when you're buying things, they don't have even the little...like, you can't buy a box of the macaroni and cheese unless you buy the butter and the milk that goes in there because they don't have that either. But they have macaroni and cheese, it's just as cheese in the other. So, a lot of times when we buy things, we don't realize that they don't have the stuff even to make it. So, today I bought a turkey pan with it and some other things. So, it would be helpful if everybody could do a little thing for our food pantries for this weekend.
They are working on it. And I do want it to work. I want everybody to be able to hear it properly. So, thanks for the patience. Tomorrow is Veterans Day, right? Or tomorrow is Veterans Day. There's a Veterans Day ceremony at five o'clock. Five o'clock, Frank, is the Veterans Day ceremony tomorrow?
Rain or shine.
Rain or shine. Hope we see as many people there as can. There is volume on the TV station, but not from the cable channel? Is that the issue? Oh, my. I promise we'll get started as soon as we get that ironed out. We'll talk about that in a couple minutes. Any luck? Yeah, if we have some chairs, we can put them out for sure. I don't know if there's... is enough. But Bill's out there. He'll be helpful. Bill, can we get some more...is there any more chairs that we can put out out there? Are there any more chairs that we can put around in the lobby? We'll do the...we'll put out what we have and then we're gonna get started. Test one-two, test one-two. Is that okay? Test one-two, test one-two. Did it go back off? I didn't hear you say that again. Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay, good. They wanna make sure that it's not a problem with it going out over the cable channel. That TV is the cable TV. And so, if there's people at home, they may be experiencing the same problem as that TV. So, we really wanna make sure they get that fixed. We want everybody...
I'm socially distanced. I'm trying to make sure everybody has a chair and they can see the TV.
Thank you.
If there's an area in the lobby and they can't see the TV, you should not proceed.
We'll do the best we can, Jerry. Thank you. Okay, so, it may be that TV. Apparently, we're getting some texts from people outside the building that the cable is working. The cable TV portion is working. It was working earlier, so... Not sure what happened to it. Any sound out there yet?
Apparently, if you have money, you can do anything.
People came home early from...
Were they too busy eating a sandwich at Wawa? What was the deal?
Come on, guys. Come on, let's work on the sound. I know, but this isn't productive. We'll do the best we can.
I mean, we pay a lot of taxes in this township. We got eight chairs in a room?
The meeting's gonna get started. We will start the meeting.
Hard to find justification.
I need to call one of our teenagers in here to get this going.
Alright, they're rigging up the TV to work. So, it'll get started in a second. Thank you. Well, we thought we'd start at seven to try to get a jump on it. Obviously, that didn't work out well. Sorry, guys. Sorry, everybody. I know, I don't know. I think they're...I think they came from the country. We getting close? We good? Test one-two, test one-two, testing one-two-three-four-five, testing one-two-three-four-five. We good? We good? I'm getting a thumbs up? Okay, let's get this meeting started. Thank you, everybody, for your patience, applicant, residents. Sorry about that. Technology doesn't always wanna work. You guys ready out there? I know everybody's here. Okay, before we...actually, I'm gonna open the hearing and then Mr. Paizo has a quick statement. So, we're gonna open the hearing to consider consideration of preliminary and final plan of subdivision and land development, Wawa application of Provco Pinegood Northampton LLC, 287 Holland Road. So, before I turn it over to you, if you don't mind, I'm gonna have Mr. Paizo just make a quick statement.
Sure. After the...this application that we're going to hear this evening first made its way into the township and went through the review process, and first made its way to the supervisors that they were aware that it was in the township for consideration. Mr. Moore approached me and shared with me that he believed that he might have a potential conflict of interest arising from his business. At that time, and this again was about a year or so ago, he and I discussed it. We discussed the nature of the potential conflict and we decided at that time that should the application ever come before the Board of Supervisors, he would recuse himself from participating in the hearing and from voting on the application. Inasmuch as we've now reached that stage in the process, as the application is now formally before the supervisors for action and for their consideration, the record should reflect that Supervisor Moore has recused himself from participating in this evening's hearing and has recused himself from voting on the application. The record for this evening should also reflect that for the last several months, the Board of Supervisors have been conducting our meetings in a...what we trust is a COVID-compliant environment. The seating within the room is socially distanced. We're up here on the dais among the people in the audience. The township also set up at that time a secondary overflow room, if you will, within the township building where residents and participants who wished to observe the meeting but for whom there wasn't space in this room could watch and observe the...watch and observe the meeting. When we get to the point in the meeting when there is public comment, members of the public who wish to speak, whether they're in this room or in the overflow room, will certainly have that opportunity to do so. At the time this evening's meeting was supposed to start, there was some varying opinions within the community as to whether the supervisors should continue to hold the meeting under those circumstances. Nonetheless, the meeting is being held under those circumstances. However, one of our residents wished to lodge a quote-unquote "formal complaint" or a formal protest that the meeting is being conducted without every single member of the public who wished to be present in this room. That objection is duly noted.
So, just the way we're gonna work is slightly different tonight, and I think it actually will be more beneficial. Normally, we have public comment prior to the presentations, but I think under the circumstances today, the applicant should make their presentation and then the residents have an opportunity to formulate anything additional that you may wanna say based on their presentation. So, the way we're gonna work it is the applicant will make their presentation. When they have...when they believe they're finished presenting, we'll have a couple minutes for the board to ask specific questions if the board has any questions. Then I'll turn it over to the public. We'll let the public come up. Each person will come up, our standard, three-minute comment, period. If you have a question, the question should come to me and then I'll either take the question to be later to answer or may ask the applicant to answer. We really want this to try to run smooth. And in order to run smooth, we just ask everybody to kinda respect the flow. We'll do the best we can to answer everybody's concerns, to hear everybody's concerns. We'll try not to ask the same question over and over again. If once we hear it and we get an answer, please just take that as the answer. I usually say this, I'll say it again. Do your best not to be duplicative, but the time is yours and we do wanna hear from everybody. I promise I will make sure that everybody in this building gets an opportunity to speak if they want to. I know this is a difficult setup, but we'll do the best we can. It has worked in the other meetings and it will work well tonight. For those that want to email a comment in, we still allowed that. It's publiccomment@nhtwp.org, three hundred words or less. Your comment will get read out loud. It just has to make sure it has your street address, number, and street name, and your name. And obviously, this is the only thing on the agenda, so you don't have to put what the agenda is. And we'll take care of doing that. To be accommodating, especially because there was postponements twice, we did receive comments in the past. And as long as those persons are not here to speak or they haven't put another comment in, I'm gonna read all the comments that we received at the other meetings as well because those people did take the time to put a comment in and ask for it to be read in the record. I think that's only fair. So, there will be a point in time tonight where we're just gonna sit and listen to me read through the emails. But they are important comments, they are public comments, and we do wanna hear from everybody. So, with that, I'm gonna start with the applicant. And, excuse me?
I have comments from some residents that are in their nineties, teens and nineties, who have no computer access.
Okay, give them to Mr. Wirt. He'll take a look at them. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, look, this is the applicant's time and we wanna give them their time. So, thank you for doing that, Pam. I appreciate you bringing that up. But let's try to keep the interruptions to a minimum. Obviously, this is a passionate issue. There are things that you will hear that you will like and things that you will hear that you probably won't like. Please, let's try to keep the noise level down so that we can keep the flow going. I'm not... Please don't interrupt me. I'm gonna ask you to please not interrupt me anymore and everybody will get their time to speak. I'll turn it over to you. Thank you. If you would give your name and introduce the people that are with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that loud enough? Can you hear me?
Yeah, I think we're good.
Okay, thank you. I'm John Van Luvene. I'm an attorney with Eastburn and Gray in Doylestown, and I represent the applicant Provco Pinegood Northampton LLC. The applicant is represented by Michael Cooley, a principal of Provco to my right. Mike Riddell is here as a representative of Wawa in case there are questions that are operational in nature that Mr. Riddell might be able to answer. Behind me is CJ Bach, our engineer with Bowler Engineering, the gentleman who was primarily involved in the preparation of the site plans. We're not going to take much of the resident's time, we hope. We're gonna try to keep our remarks quite simple and to the point. The property involved, and I'm saying this more for the benefit of some of the folks who may be watching who have not had the familiarity with this project than many of the people in the room and in the adjoining rooms may have. The property involved in this application is a property approximately 6.9 acres. It's between Buck Road, Roxville Road, and Holland Road, and it has been owned by the Wright family for a number of years. Although I know there are, from looking at the signs, there are a lot of people who think a gas station, what they're called on the signs anyway, or Wawa, is inappropriate. I took the opportunity today just to go back to my archives and review all the zoning ordinances, starting with the one in 1948, which I still have a copy of. And I can assure everybody in this room that from 1948 to the present time, a gasoline station has been permitted, a permitted use on this tract of land. It's one of the oldest zone properties for commercial use. It was zone business back under the 48 ordinance, then subsequently became Zone C2. It has always been zoned that way. Wright family has kept it vacant. I guess a lot of people benefited from that through the years. But like everybody, there comes a time when it's appropriate, in this case, to settle an estate that the property has been offered for sale. The use that is proposed, the convenience store with gasoline sales or motor vehicle fuel sales, is a permitted use in this district. I know there has been a dispute about that. The zoning officer gave that opinion. His opinion was appealed by several residents. The zoning hearing board of the township affirmed that decision. And although it's on appeal, there is no stay. We're quite confident for the reasons that were expressed by the zoning hearing board in its opinion, that that opinion will be affirmed. The circumstances of this property being in a C2 general commercial district, also part of your village overlay district, are identical to the circumstances that apply in Richborough where you also have a Wawa with gasoline sales.
Folks, let's keep the...let's give him his time and let's keep the moving...the meeting moving.
What I'm describing is your zoning, not whether the residents...whether the residents that live close by. That's not relevant under the zoning ordinance. And our job, as the board knows, is to meet the objective criteria of the ordinance, both the zoning ordinance and the subdivision and land development ordinance. To that end, my client has been working on this project since January of 2019. We've done almost three years of meetings with the township, the township staff, reviewing letters from your township consultants, and working with your township traffic engineer with respect to the traffic circulation plan and the plan for the implementation of the highway concept that was part of your Holland Village master plan that you adopted about six years ago, if I recall correctly. So, where we are tonight is, in our opinion, and we'll get to this in a minute, but I don't intend to go through tonight all of the several review letters you have. I think they're pretty clear. We have worked our way through all the review comments to the point where I believe that all of the items in all of the review letters are technical in nature. They all will comply. There are a series of waiver requests. Those, again, are relatively technical. Several of them pertain to traffic, and we can go through each of them if you have time to do that. And if you don't, I think it's fair to say that they're self-explanatory. And where your staff, your consultants were asked to comment on the waivers, for example, traffic, they've all been supported. So, in my view, none of those are controversial and there are no zoning issues left. And the subdivision comments are not of a design nature. They are perfunctory, they are technical issues. And as you know, when it's very common to approve plans subject to technical compliance, that it doesn't involve matters of planning. We prepared a presentation tonight briefly, and I'd like to take you through it again for the benefit of everyone who is not familiar with the project. We're gonna try to take this very simply. The first page is a copy of the site plan for the north side. Again, this is a subdivision. The proposed subdivision divides this Wright property...
Can I interrupt once? I'm sorry, can we make that bigger? Who's doing that? Is that Bill? Thanks, I'm sorry, Mr. Van Luvene.
Not a problem.
Kind of fill the screen with the actual site plan itself. I don't think we need the white area around so that everybody can see it. I don't think we need the white area around so that everybody can see it. I want to make sure they can see it out in the hallway and in the other room as well.
What we have here is the -- this is a subdivision plan.
Thank you.
It proposes to subdivide the property into two parts. There is also the land development portion is the north side, lot number one, which is 2.426 acres, and that's the one that has been blown up here on the screen. It shows the Wawa convenience store. It also shows the, in kind of a one-dimensional form, the area where the canopy and the fueling stations are placed underneath. This plan does, however, show some of the -- this plan was, as I'd indicated, an evolving plan over a period of three years. When we first came in with the plan, we had a very simple connector road between Buck Road and Holland Road. The staff encouraged us and my client to attempt to implement the Holland master plan, traffic circulation plan that had been developed by Mr. DeSantis. My client actually worked with Mr. DeSantis with the township's consent, so that there was no conflict between our traffic engineers and the township's traffic engineer. So, the evolution with respect to access is that this road configuration here matches your Holland Village master plan as far as the way it connects Holland Road over to Buck Road. The other thing that this plan indicates, we, the staff, kept us apprised of concerns as they became known to the township very recently. In fact, within the last 10 to 12 months, we reduced the number of fueling stations from 16 to 12, and that is reflected here. That was some concern about the numbers, and my client, again, agreed to make a concession. You'll also see to the north here, we have Hope Road, which is on the north side of the plan. That's where the neighborhood, a number of the residents there, obviously, have expressed concerns about this project. Our original plan showed an ingress and egress aligned with Hope Road. Again, in response to suggestions that we tried to realign the access points, and with the assistance, again, of Mr. DeSantis, we now have no access points directly opposite Hope Road, and we have limited points of ingress and egress on Roxville Road. We also have, as you can see, in a substantially beefed-up landscape plan to border on the north end of this project adjacent, where it's in closest proximity to the residence. If we can move, Bill, to the next page. This is an aerial view. Again, it'd be probably a little bit better if you took it back out a little. There you go, thank you. And on this site, you see Roxville Road, you see Buck Road, and in the foreground there, at the bottom of the plan, you see the ingress and egress to the shopping center across the street. The third sheet, we can move right ahead, Bill, if you would, please. The third page shows a conception, artist conception of the finished product, project, along with the traffic improvements, showing the alignment now of the realigned Holland Road and Buck Road intersection with the shopping center intersection across the street. Now, we're going to start. We have then, then we move ahead to show you the different vantage points. Again, if we move to the next page, you'll see this is a view, looking, when we get there, looking across Buck Road from Roxville Road toward the house. The house you see in the distance is on the Wright property. That's the existing view. The next page, I'll move through this quickly. The next page shows our artist conception of what this project looked like. This is to scale. Landscape plan mimics what we have shown on the landscape plan. It shows the “Welcome to Holland” sign, and this is, again, a very accurate portrayal of what this will look like upon completion.
My neighborhood! Why could you do this? I live there! I don't care, it's all that greed! Screw me out! Destroy the people!
We want you to have your “Alone” sign. So, I'm saving.
I know, this is a very --
All right.
Can I just ask you to hold on one second?
Sure.
I know there's a little delay for the folks in the lobby, so I'm just going to ask you to try to keep your voices down. I just want to call it a line. Because we get feedback.
That's my quarter! 35 years!
I promise you, we'll listen to you tonight, I promise.
Thank you. We could take the next slide, Bill.
Bill?
Take one more, next slide, please. Where is Bill outside? I can't.
I think they were having a little bit of feedback issue. Sorry. Can you go?
Can I just ask a question? Can we go back to these slides when we do our presentation?
We'll talk about it then. Let the applicant finish, okay? Please don't interrupt. Bill, can you go to the next slide, please?
Right. This view looks, is from the shopping center exit, looking across Buck Road to the project site. The next slide following then would show the view from that same location upon completion of the project. And I agree, it doesn't look like an open field anymore. There's no question about that.
Disgusting! Disgusting!
Please, I promise everybody will get their opportunity to speak. Let Mr. Van Leveney finish.
What we're trying to do is to show you what it's going to look like in real perspective, rather than two-dimensional. You may not like it, but that's, this is what we're proposing, and it's in accordance with the ordinances. The next slide, please, Bill. This is the Hope Road intersection with Roxville, looking from the stop sign across to the field, which is the site of the project. The next slide shows the vantage point from that view, and you'll see there is no entrance directly across Hope Road. It shows the landscaping that we proposed, substantially beefed up in accordance with the requests that we've had. And the last slide is simply conclusory. It shows the access, it shows the store, and there are this numbered features, which I don't think are really relevant. So, that is, that is the project. That's what is proposed on this set of site, a set of plans. And as I've indicated, we have spent a lot of time working on this plan with the township staff, trying to respond to comments as they came in, trying to be responsive to what we were understanding were some of the concerns. Obviously, the one that we haven't addressed and we're not going to is the concern that there shouldn't be anything here except the field. That's not a viable option, and so, but as far as the site plan is concerned, one of the reasons we've taken our time to get here is that we wanted to be certain that we had a chance to address as --
I'm sorry? If you need to pull your mask down a little bit, it's okay. There you go. Thank you.
I'm more than happy to take my mask off. That's fine.
Just for the speaking.
What was the question?
We'll let you have your comment later. Keep going, please.
What I had said was, and I'll paraphrase it, I said that we've spent a lot of time now responding to all the comments that we have heard, repeated to us through the township staff. Where possible, we have tried to address those comments. We believe that our plan is in compliance with not only the zoning ordinance, but the village overlay district requirements. And as I've indicated, we spent a lot of time, and my client proposes to spend a fair amount of money, making the road improvements that are, were conceptualized in your Holland Village master plan. This plan has now been vetted with, preliminarily by PennDOT, both with respect to the road alignment, Buck Road and Holland Road, as well as the entrances on Roxville Road. It's all part of a comprehensive traffic plan. Mr. DeSantis helped us develop it. His firm has submitted it to PennDOT for review comment. Joe's here if there are specific questions related to traffic. With respect to review comments, and it's never been my practice to go through every single comment, because I know that your staff has already reviewed them, as I said to begin with, these are, with the possible exception of going through waivers, that if you want to go through them with specificity, we certainly are able to do that. I'm fair to say that there are no zoning issues that are left in any of these review letters. If you review the subdivision and land development comments, they are all essentially technical in outlook, or they are conditions such as public water supply, you know, requirements that we meet with, public water and sewer services propose, we're going to need agreements with the authority, all the standard conditions that you see. Nothing unusual about that. The same is true of the Panoni letter. Both Panoni's letter and Gilmore's letter talk about the waivers with respect to the waivers that address traffic. They're part of the McMahon's September 17, 2021 review letter, where Mr. DeSantis, well, the reviewer from McMahon indicates that their firm is in agreement with the five waivers that relate to traffic. So, I don't believe that there are any, from our perspective, no open review comments. And we are here to answer questions, if there are any, that are relevant to, in our opinion, to ordinance-related issues. If we can answer questions that may be beyond ordinance-related issues, but are within the reasonable purview of what people are concerned about, we'll be happy to try to answer them.
Okay.
But that's really, I felt most of this is a meeting for the residents. We've done, we believe we've done our homework, and we've done our job with this plan.
Okay, thank you. So, I want to make sure that anybody that wanted to have an opportunity to comment is on the sign-up sheet. So, if you haven't done that, please do that now. We're not quite ready for public comment, but I want to give everybody an opportunity to at least come up and make sure that they get signed in. I know there's a little delay. The way it's going through the cable for that TV, there's a few-second delay, so that's what we hear in here. Okay, thank you. So, just real quick, when it is time for public comment, I'm going to do it the way we have been doing it at most of the meetings. I'll ask the first person to come up, and then I'll ask for an on-deck person, so that will be the next person. They could come up, stand at the back table, and be ready to go, just so we can try to keep the flow together. I will ask everybody to please keep your comments to three minutes. If I start to ask you to wrap up, please do so. I'm sure there's going to be a lot of folks that want to comment, and to be respectful to everybody's time, we want to make sure that everybody gets their opportunity. Please try to keep your comments down. Again, don't be duplicative. It is your time to speak, but if you have something new to add, I think the supervisors definitely want to hear it. So, before we do that, I'd like to just go around and ask the supervisors that are here if they have any specific questions for the applicant. I'll start with Mrs. Silver.
No, I read packet, and I went through the review letters.
Your mic's not on. Thank you.
No, I do not. I went through the review letters. Our packet was very thorough, and I do not have any questions at this time for the applicant.
Okay. Mr. O'Donnell?
Yeah, I actually have, I'll take it off.
And what we'll do is, because it's so muffled, we'll definitely take masks off when you speak. So, when you come up to the mic, please, you know, okay to take your mask off. We will separate that so that the folks here aren't right in front of the speaker. Thanks, Frank.
I don't know that I agree with your portrayal of all the waivers as being purely technical. As I read through, like waiver four is, please, do me a favor, folks, let me speak, let everybody else up here speak, and then have your opportunity to speak. Otherwise, you're going to throw me off what I want to say. Waiver, waiver number four is permitting parking within 20 feet of the proposed building. Waiver number seven, to prevent the dumpster enclosure to be within the front yard. Waiver number eight, to permit off-street parking spaces, loading, and canopy and pumps to be along the front of the building in lieu of the side or rear of the building. Waiver number nine, to permit less than the required amount of parking lot landscaping area. Waiver number 11, to permit fewer than the required number of replacement trees. Waiver 13, it's probably more technical, it says the existing site topography is challenging to maintain accessible grades. I understand those issues, but my question is, are they really issues pertaining to the peculiar conditions pertaining to the landing question, or are they issues because you're putting too big of a, too big of a development on a smaller site?
Happy to answer those questions. I think the first one you asked without was the, was number four, Mr. O'Donnell? Was that correct? That's the waiver to permit parking within 20 feet of the proposed building, and as is noted, is a standard configuration. One of the reasons for that is for the convenience of the customers. It's an operational issue. I'm sure if you'd like Mr. Riddell to comment on it, he's able to comment on it. You've granted that waiver before, obviously. You have the same waiver in Richborough. And again, it's an operational waiver, similar to the requirement of not putting curb between the parking area and the front door where people can trip and create a hazard. This is for the convenience of the customers, the people from the township who are going to be using this facility. And, you know, the subdivision land development ordinance requirements are not like zoning variances. There have to be reasonable explanations for the waiver. Could it probably, could it have been designed otherwise? It probably could be, but again, it's not a safe configuration. What we do here is propose a configuration that is for the safety of the persons who are going to be visiting the site. So, I call it a technical. I don't think there's any planning reason why that becomes an issue. I did not make note of all of your comments, but what, could you refresh my recollection and give me the second one that you commented on?
Section one, second one was, second one was number seven, Mr. Van Leveney.
Can you take your mask off, sir?
I will. Thank you.
Number seven?
That is correct.
All right. Number seven is the, is a direct result of the fact that we beefed up the landscaping up at the north end of the site. And by beefing up the landscaping, it became impossible to put street trees within that configuration. We've put beefed-up landscaping there, so we're asking for a technical waiver to basically put the landscaping plan in there that we wanted to do for the benefit of the adjoining property owners. That's the reason for the waiver. It's directly responsive to providing additional landscaping.
Number eight was my next one.
Number eight is the replacement trees. There is not room on this site for that number of replacement trees. Again, part of it has to do with the amount of --
I think number eight is the permit off-street parking spaces, loading, canopy, and pumps.
Well, number eight that I'm looking at is replacement --
You're looking at the letter, not at their actual --
Oh, okay.
I'm looking at the Gilmore letter.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Okay, all right. Which one is it, then?
Waiver from Sado, to permit off-street parking spaces, loading, canopy, and pumps to be along the front of the building.
Number 11.
Okay, it's number eight on mine here.
It's number 11.
I've got it, okay. And again --
I'll tell you, and you can tell him.
And again, if you look at this site, you don't often see a site that has roads surrounding it on all four sides. That makes it very, that makes it very difficult, and that is the function primarily, of the fact that Holland Road had to be relocated through the middle of the site. And at that point, there is, as you said, there is virtually no way to comply. It's hard to tell what the, where the front is, where the back is. You, you know, if you put it some other place, you'd have another argument that it was still in front of a building. So, that's what I call a technical waiver, because it's very difficult to tell what the front and the rear is on this property, because we have, we have to pick a front yard versus a rear yard on the site. It doesn't fall neatly within the parameters or the conventional design where you have one street frontage on a property. And again, I believe that, well, that's the explanation, and I thought that's strictly the result of site topography and site location.
Okay, the next one I had was number nine here.
Which one is it, sir? Which one is it, sir?
That's the permit less than the required amount of parking lot landscaping area.
And again, the technical reason is that we moved the landscaping up to the north side, which is not in the parking lot, but we put more material up there than we would otherwise be required to do. We've created more buffer up there than we would otherwise be required to propose. And for that reason, we've had to essentially move some of the landscaping.
11 on mine was the replacement tree issue?
All right, the replacement trees, again, there are, there's not room on this site to put that number of replacement trees. Your ordinance provides, your ordinance provides an opportunity to offer fee in lieu, so that the trees can be put someplace where they would be more beneficial. The applicant has agreed to the fee in lieu in accordance with your ordinance requirements. And again, that's not an unusual requirement, in my opinion, and I think you've probably granted that waiver many times, subject to the payment of the fee. Obviously, we're not just asking for a straight waiver, but the township can obviously use the fee in lieu to put the trees where they're most beneficial.
And the last one I had was the existing site topography is challenging to maintain accessible grades. I'm just not clear what that means.
Well, that's what I call a technical requirement, because I'm not an engineer, sir.
Neither am I.
CJ, you want to answer that? I'm going to hand the mic, if I can, back to Mr. Bach.
Which number are we talking about?
Mr. Bock, take your mask off, please.
Of course. Sorry.
It's the last one on your list, it should be.
This waiver is talking about the maximum depth of the water inside of an inlet. One of our lower inlets, in the worst storm event, the water is not a full foot below the top of the rim. It is less than. It may be eight inches or so. So it doesn't fully meet that criteria of, in the ordinance, it says, you know, the water at worst in the inlet should be a foot below the top of the grate. Our hydraulic analysis showed it was very close. It was about eight inches in our worst inlet. So, but accordingly, we needed to ask for a waiver. We've talked with the township engineer about it. They, they were in agreement with us that it was very de minimis, and I believe they were generally supportive of our request.
Thank you. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell.
Thank you, Frank. Dr. Rose?
My first question is, I don't seem to see any electric stations on the site, and I have, I've checked out a lot of Wawa's, and they all have electrical, electric stations, and I wonder why we don't.
You talk about charging stations for cars?
Charging stations for electric cars.
I don't recall the issue coming up, but--
I hand the mic to Mr. Riddell.
Okay.
Yes, so Wawa doesn't provide electric charging. We do have an agreement with Tesla, so we present every plan where we're approved for a new store to Tesla, and they decide if they want to use our parking for charging stations. So that'll be the case here. We'll present the plan to Tesla if we're approved, and they may or may not want to put electric charging here.
Can you also tell me, what will your hours of operation be?
I assume it's 24.
24.
24/7.
So what I would like to know is, when are the deliveries, the hours of delivery?
Well, the store's not there, so we don't, we don't know when the deliveries will be yet. But, yeah, they'll be, they'll be typical, and we can, if the township wants to restrict, if the township would like to restrict the hours for deliveries, we would definitely be amenable to that. It's something we do quite often when we're in a community.
Yes. I, that's, I don't know about everybody else, but I, I know that it's a federal law that trucks can't idle for more than five minutes, but I don't think that we should have deliveries all during the night when people are sleeping.
So a typical restriction on deliveries to the store might be from 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM.
Okay. Mr. Pellegrino, is that something that we can add to this, or is it something that after, after it is approved, do we add to it, or how do we do that?
It would be part of a motion.
Yeah, it would have to be part of a motion.
Okay.
So we'll save that for later.
The only, the one caveat, and Mr. Riddell, I think, will bear me out on this. The only exception are fuel deliveries and fuel delivery trucks. As I recall from the last one of these that I handled, the trucks turn their motors off while they're delivering, so there is no idling.
We'll let everybody have their time, please.
The fuel deliveries are made on a program basis, basically. The central operation is notified, and the fuel deliveries are made when the tanks get to a certain level. Is that correct, Mike?
Yes, that's correct. So fuel deliveries could come at any time, but all other deliveries, deliveries to the building, as I said, we can restrict those. Yes, and to my knowledge, the tanker truck is turned off. It's supposed to be turned off during delivery. It's a gravity operation, so once the refilling pipes are connected, it goes by gravity, and it's, so there is no power that's needed.
That's it.
Anything else? Well, I have a lot of questions, but I think you answered most of them, and I think you'll probably answer many of the same questions I have when the public speaks, because many of their questions are also my questions. But what is your name again? I'm sorry. Let me take my mask off. I'm sorry.
Michael Riddell.
And what do you do for Wawa?
I'm a real estate project engineer.
Okay, so you don't, you don't have, you don't participate in the business end of Wawa, you do the real estate part, not the operations, I'm saying, I guess.
Yes, I'm not in operations. I'm in real estate.
I would not want a dumpster across the street from my house. It's just that simple, right? And, and, hang on, please, everybody will speak. I've been quiet for many months. It's my turn, okay? Okay, thank you. I'm concerned about that waiver, because look where it is. Dumpsters bring birds, okay? You know, I don't have to ask you, I'm just, these are, these are my comments. And when you say gasoline deliveries are typical, what is typical? So, because it's not typical to do this, so I'm trying to understand the situation.
I'm sorry, not typical to do--
You said, you said the hours that gasoline, gasoline deliveries would be typical. I didn't know what that meant.
So they, as I specified, they could be at any time. So we'll get a fuel delivery approximately once per week, once per day, and it comes on demand, as John was saying. It's an automated system that when the level in the tanks, underground storage tanks gets to a certain limit, it triggers a call for more fuel.
Have you guys ever, have you done any, just kind of environmental studies about when, when deliveries are made? How, I understand there's a lot of variables, wind, et cetera, but in general, what's the area of affected, the affected area of odor and fumes and things like that when gasoline are made?
So I'm not aware of any study. From what I understand, it's--
Just, let him talk, please. I mean, we're asking him questions. We brought him here tonight for this. Let's, let's give him an opportunity. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not aware of a study pertaining to that. So all of this is a closed system. So when there's a pipe that's hooked up to, from the tanker truck to the infill valve, and another one, a hose that's connected to the, to another part of the tank, so that as fuel goes into the tank, the vapors that are in the tank exit back into the truck. So it's a closed system. It's sealed, and there isn't any, any significant vapor coming off of a fuel delivery.
Mr. Selisker, you asked a question about what you called the dumpster. Could I ask Mr. Bock to address the character of what you've called a dumpster, because it really isn't a dumpster?
Absolutely. This is your time. I just--
Well, I do think that's an important question.
Sure. No, feel free. It says dumpster in the waiver, so that's what I went with.
I believe it says trash enclosure, but-- Well, that's a, that's a very important--
Excuse me, hey, hey, just to be clear, the letter that I'm looking at--
That's a very important distinction.
The letter that I'm looking at, that's bowler, says permit the dumpster enclosure.
Okay, enclosure, right. It's, there's actually a structure that encloses the trash facility, as well as recycling facilities. So it's fully enclosed. There's really not an opportunity for birds or, or other animals, raccoons, et cetera, to get inside of it.
Please, please, please. Thanks. If I were to, if I were to travel to other Wawa's, I would find something similar?
Correct, yes. The prototypical enclosure.
And, serious question, but would I find any sort of exterminating devices left around, you know, for mice or rodents or anything like that? Would they be in that area of the dumpsters if I went to a Wawa? Would that be a problem anywhere?
Are you saying, would you find like a rat trap, per se?
Whatever, yeah, whatever. Some sort of varmint controls around these?
Whatever you would traditionally find at any commercial facility. I, I don't know. I don't do extermination.
No, no, I understand.
I'm a civil engineer. I don't, I don't know.
I think I'm just trying to make the point that this is close to houses and--
Okay. Well, relative to what would be in the front yard, it's actually, it's predominantly in the rear yards, it's been defined. For this property, the rear is Roxville, front is both Buck and the Connector Road. So it's only nominally in the front yard. If, you know, I believe we, you know, that if I, if we moved it, then accessing it is challenging. If you move it further into the site, it's challenging to pick up with the truck. So it's in its logical location for a site layout for a Wawa, and given thought to access and being able to pick it up, also in proximity to the correct place for the building, operationally, where it needs to be, where people, employees would, you know, have come out from inside and--
Sure.
--and access the trash.
Just humor me a bit. I'm really concerned about how close it is to the houses, whether it's the front, back, or side. I don't really care. That's, that's really what I want to, just wanted to ask about that. Just check my notes, I'm sorry. For the folks out listening in the lobby of the Township Building, because there is a little bit of a delay, I'm just asking if you can try to keep it down, because we're getting some feedback. It is a little distracting, if you can. Thank you. That'll take a minute to get there, so. Wait a minute. Last thing, I guess, and I don't, just a comment, a little bit more on, on the waivers, and just the technicality around the stormwater. And I have great concern about stormwater in our township in general. The, the last few rains, so I happen to run with the fire department here as well, and we were extraordinarily busy with flooded roads, and highly sensitive to stormwater issues and how they impact every area of the township. Can you just talk a little bit about what you need to do there? Because I just don't understand, and Amanda is our engineer, if you can just help, maybe help the board and the public understand what, what this means.
Yeah, I'm sorry. CJ?
I'm asking whoever can answer the question best.
I certainly addressed it shortly.
You can answer it, and then Amanda can explain it to us, else she-- Go ahead.
The requirements for the stormwater, the proposal here does propose both subsurface infiltration basins, as well as an above-ground basin in the corner, to facilitate and meet the requirements of both the township ordinance relative to rate and recharge, as well as the state requirements for volume and infiltrating a certain amount of volume. The site right now doesn't have any stormwater controls, and we're proposing controls for not only our site development, but also the Connector Road. So the Connector Road proposes, you know, a substantial amount of additional impervious, and we're able, we're able to facilitate the requirements of that proposed improvement as well on our site. So collectively, the additional empowerment volume, the infiltration capabilities, you know, it, it should be a significant benefit to the stormwater operations of the area, because it takes off a lot of water offline, and it impounds it, and again, and allows for water quality treatment by tainting it, as well as infiltrating the water. So, and these will all be to the state standards, to meet the MPDS CG1 requirements. And is there any other details I can elaborate on?
So I guess the waiver request just asks that the volume control requirement be met, but the, but the DEP has to approve it. What if they don't?
Well, our proposed system, because infiltration capability of the soil is very poor, there's a special type of system that DEP now allows us to do. It's called a managed release system, where we infiltrate water through a strata of media, and then we actually allow it to slowly release through an underdrain. The township ordinance doesn't have any real provisions for that approach, but it's, it's become a pretty commonplace approach to deal with sites with poor infiltration abilities. And accordingly, the township engineer, we've worked with them, and they're generally agreeable that, provided we do secure our approval for their DEP and demonstrate that we meet the actual requirements for the system with them, that the township engineer would be amenable to it.
But so there is an, there is a chance that the DEP may not agree, I suppose. Maybe unlikely, but--
We expect we can meet the requirements, and the system does do that, but because the township doesn't have any, you know, standards that address this approach, they're kind of deferring to DEP to administer the standards and make sure that's being designed, you know, properly.
Okay.
May I just maybe supplement what you had said?
Thanks, Amanda.
So just to touch on a few things that you did say, that the site currently does not have any stormwater controls, and by that, you mean that it is just a lawn area, so to speak, that the groundwater does naturally infiltrate back into the ground, right? So that is the current condition. As far as stormwater controls, that would be something that is an engineered system that goes onto the site. Those would be an above-ground basin, which you would typically see. There's one at the new police building next door. There's, you know, quite a few around town. There's one underneath of the parking lot area that takes up, I'd say, roughly a quarter of the parking lot area underground, which you would then be able to infiltrate through inlets in the parking lot. And then there's a third underground infiltration basin that's to the south of the, the site, where you can see that small patch of grass right near the Connector Road on the rendering there. So there are regulations from the DEP that they would need to comply with, and they frankly could not build if they did not comply with those. So they are required to meet anything from the DEP and any of the township's ordinances.
If I can, but thought about this. Amanda, is there a, I remember with Addisville Commons, when that was being built, that they had to improve the stormwater system by a certain percentage, being that it is new, and does that still go with this as well?
Exactly, yes. That's all factored into it. And again, that's through the DEP regulations and through the township's stormwater management ordinance, that they are essentially required to contain a certain amount of water for a period of time and improve the water quality of anything that they are, they are managing on their site. So yes, in, in theory, there is an improvement to simply managing, you know, water that falls onto a parking lot area.
Okay. Thank you.
And if I could just add to that, Part 4, Section C of the Gilmore and Associates review letter of September 21, 2021, our comments under bringing in the Chaminde Creek Watershed Stormwater Management Ordinance, and what I said initially, will comply. If you read through, there's a number of, we have to get the ENS plan approved by the Conservation District, MPDS permit, and there are a number of minor technical issues that have to be met. The response there is that we have no issue with any of the comments, and from my perspective, all those comments, the condition would be that all those comments need to be resolved to the satisfaction of the township engineer. We're not asking for any waivers from any of those stormwater criteria that are in that ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have any further questions right now. I think I may have some more, once I start to hear from some of the residents as well. So let's try to do this in as efficient and orderly way as possible. As Mr. O'Donnell asked, let's give everyone the same courtesy of let whoever is talking finish, let them say what they have to say. If anybody wants to ask a question, ask the question toward me, the chair, and then I'll let you know whether we're going to park the question and maybe answer it later. Mr. Van Leeuwen, and maybe you want to just kind of take some notes--
I will.
--or, or answer it right away. And it'll just depend on how many people and the complication of whatever the question is. We will do our best to try to answer. One thing I just will ask is, I recognize that some of the answers you may get will not be pleasing to you. I get it. Let's try not to be argumentative. The answer is the answer, and we'll just take it for what it is. If you have a follow-up question, again, ask it to me. I really want everybody here to have an opportunity to express themselves, and we'll do that. Please stick to three minutes, because we have a fairly long list, and I have many, many emails to read, to the group. And I'm happy to do that. I think it's appropriate. I'm glad that we have this kind of public participation, but I want everybody to get the respect they deserve as well. So let's try to keep the hooting, hollering, and applauding, or booing down, whatever the case may be, because I don't know what everybody here has to say. down, whatever the case may be, because I don't know what everybody here has to say. But I think I have a general idea. So I'm going to start, and we'll do, we'll do this like we've done it before. I will say who's up first, and then who's on deck, and we'll just go one at a time. Again, try not to be duplicative, although I guess by me keep saying that, I am duplicative, but I'm asking everyone not to do that, and that'll help move the meeting along. And I apologize in advance for butchering any names, but I have gone through my life with a butchered name, so I feel your pain. We'll start out with Dr. Barry Kroll, and then on deck will be Judy Kroll. Hello, Doc.
Good evening.
Oh, I don't think you're on.
Am I on? Yes. Thanks for listening tonight. So Dr. Barry Kroll, 39 Hope Road, actually a pediatrician in this area for the past 27 years. I'm going to have to talk quickly because I have a lot of stuff to go, so here we go. American Academy of Pediatrics came out with a nice article, they call it a policy statement, in June of 2021. A lot of information in here, and most importantly, I'll quote right from them, this is Recommendation 1D, "I am to serve as a pediatrician, as a source of expertise in your community for the vulnerability of children, to air pollution, and the importance of primary prevention." That would be preventing that. That's a disgrace. So anyway, I'm going to just toss those out. I was expecting a podium, but I'm not that fortunate. Benzine, facts about benzene from the CDC. We all know about the CDC these days, correct? It talks about, what is benzene? How could you be exposed to benzene? The air around hazardous wastes or gas stations can contain higher levels of benzene than any other areas. Benzene leaks from underground storage tanks and from hazardous waste sites containing benzene that can also contaminate. Well, what are, how it works, and again, I have to go to this briefly, causes cell damage, anemia, and types of leukemia. You'll be hearing a lot about leukemia. Actually, that article down there does link, actually, I'm bringing that back, not my podium. It's just too stuff to overlook. Authors, and this is Long-Term Health Effects Based on Cancer, authors of recent meta-analysis found a significant increase in the risk of childhood leukemia associated to proximity of gas stations to residents. No research, I'll give you some. So benzene, back to benzene, how it causes cancer, cells destruction, long-term effects of exposure to benzene, the major effects of benzene from long-term exposures on the blood, red blood cells, white blood cells, more studies. And I always see my time flipping through these pages, so I'll just skip that. Benzene causes cancer. Gas stations emit more than 10 times more benzene than previously recorded, article from 2018. Hilbert and colleagues discovered that vent pipes at gas stations release 10 times the amount of benzene, a known carcinogen that previously assumed in modeling used to determine how far gas stations should be placed away from sensitive sites like homes and schools. He says his research revealed current regulations are insufficient to protect people from all toxic exposure near gas stations. Another article, they talk about, American Journal of Epidemiology, childhood leukemia. I'll be hearing that a couple times tonight for me. Is it safe to live near a gas station? A little bit old, 2009, but has lots of studies, which I found pretty easily. Despite all modern health and science, safety guidelines, they must follow. Gas stations can still pose significant hazards to neighbors, especially children, higher ozone levels, also benzene, according to National Institute of Health. Big organizations coming out against.
Try to wrap it, try to wrap it up, Doc.
Wrap it up, okay, yes. Very important. Acute childhood leukemia next to gas stations. The results find finding of our previous study suggests living next to gas stations associated with acute childhood leukemia. Yet another one, acute childhood leukemia, and an article to end just on childhood leukemia from 2016, My Journal Pediatrics, How to Prevent It. And guess what it talks about? It talks about keeping, it's in here somewhere, but anyway, keeping gas stations like this away from our children. We're going to cause childhood leukemia. It's a known fact, there are studies, you just got to look for them. And then looking at that picture real quick, I made a last-minute note. Where's that bus stop going to be on those pictures?
You guys aren't concerned about that?
Thank you, Dr. Kroll.
Thank you.
Judy Kroll is next, and then Bob Pearson, I think it is. Thank you. And please, your name and address again for the record.
Hi, I'm Judy Kroll, Judy Kroll, and I'm Barry Kroll's wife, 39 Hope Road. So I just decided to do something different and write a poem. So it's called "Wawa." We do not want a Wawa at the end of our street. We don't feel that the needs of the community it would meet. I can only speak as a resident living on Hope Road, how much strife this proposed Wawa would cause, would cause to my boat. The location where they want to put it is completely wrong, and you guys on the Board of Supervisors know, that's not where it belongs. I understand that the land is zoned commercial, but it has so much more potential, since the area around it is now residential. I understand that our township can be sued, and that you don't want to be engaged in a feud. In spite of that, I ask for you to do the right thing for your constituents, and make your legacy be something magnificent. Stand by the people that you represent, and please take in account our heartfelt discontent. Seriously, I love Wawa, their convenience, hoagies and snacks, but I implore you to just listen and not be lax. Please stand up against this proposal, as our community's future is at your disposal.
Thank you. Next up is Bob Pearson, and then Pam Duffy is on deck.
Good evening, everyone. Sure, I had a church meeting at the same time, so I said a prayer for all of you, okay? So you're from, you're from Wawa group there, here? Okay, all right. So I've been in Holland since 201994, and we live about less than a mile away, right down Buck Road. So we go down there all the time. I'm a big fan of Wawa's, always have been, had coffee there tonight. Like the food, like the convenience, like all that stuff. But I don't think this is the right place for it, and I'll give you my reasons why. First of all, I'll start with traffic and safety. Traffic's very congested in that area, and all I see is that it's going to get worse with this. Gas pumps are going to increase traffic as well, because you don't have them now with the Wawa go-to down there. It's been rerouted through my neighborhood several times. I'm just off Buck Road, less than a mile away there, because of gridlock, because of accidents, because of different things. And we have many children in our neighborhood, and it poses a danger. Cars go through there. When they're rerouted, they don't go through at 15, 20 miles an hour. They're flying to get somewhere else. Pheasant Valley Strip Stores across the street, they're kind of flourishing now, coming back, and it's just not a good combination to add more to that area. Emergency vehicles go through there, go to St. Mary's, and I hear police, fire engines, EMTs go down there all the time. So if you're looking at what's bad now, trying to get to a hospital, trying to get to a fire, it's just going to add to it. It's too close to the neighborhood across the street. It violates them. I don't know any of them, but I wouldn't want to be there. But they're my neighbors. They're people who care. They're people who have lived there for quite a while, in a very nice neighborhood. Here are some possible things that could happen. Property values are going to decrease. There's going to be excess noise. There's going to be excess trash. These are possible things. Possible crime, possible vehicle accidents, possible construction damage. I just talked to my sister today in Enrico, Virginia, and she told me that during the construction of the Wawa in Enrico, there was houses around it further away than where these houses are, and how they had damaged walls, damaged mirrors, damaged windows, all because of the construction. She said it was dirty all the time, dusty all the time, and they had no use of their yards. Here are some certainties, those were possibilities. Alcohol being sold, excessive traffic, bright lights all night long, gas pumps in close proximity to homes.
Just finish up, please. Thanks.
Large gas tanks in there. You know, they're our neighbors. They're real people, some of whom may be here tonight. Are any of you on the board, are any of you neighbors in there? Do you live in that area by any chance? Raise your hand if you are.
No.
If you're not, this is a good time for empathy. It is. Put yourself in their place. Would you want to be there with this going on? Okay? There's a difference between Feasterville and Richborough. The new ones that came up, they're beautiful, they're nice. The gas prices are high. They are, they're not the lowest price, and they're the highest price around. People from our neighborhood is going to be adversely affected by doing this.
Can you, can you wrap up, please?
I will.
Thank you.
So having a Wawa on this proposed site brings more obstacles than it does opportunities. And I know you have to balance that. Business, taxes, employment, all of that. But think about the people, your constituents, my neighbors. And I ask you, don't do this. It doesn't fit. Find a better place, and bring in a Wawa and put it somewhere else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pam Duffy, you're up next, and then Robbie, and I'm sorry, I cannot read. Is there Robbie in here? Okay, thanks. You'll be, you'll be up next.
Okay, good evening. My name is Pam Duffy. I live at 125 Hope Road in Holland, PA. Just have two points to make. I have a prepared speech. I timed it, three minutes. This is the other two points I would just like to address, Mr. Van Luvene. Talked about concessions to move the ingress and egress away from Hope Road. That's BS. In the first plan, it was not lined up. Provo-Wawa is making no concessions. Second issue, variances requested. Talking about greenery. Ordinance said 10%. They requested 5.9%, 50% reduction, almost. More BS. So my neighbors and I are appalled that the township that declares a state of emergency over trash would consider destroying Holland with a super gas station 70 feet from the closest neighboring properties. We, the Holland neighbors, are declaring a state of emergency to stop the building of this mega gas station and gigantic convenience store at the north end of the Wright property, based on preserving the health, welfare, and safety of the Northampton Township residents, who will be breathing cancer-causing benzene fumes 24/7, thus killing its residents and trashing Holland forever. At the 9/22/21, at September 22, Supervisor's Meeting Supervisor Kim Rose said that our township looks like a rundown slum because of the lack of trash pickup. Destroying our community and green space by building a super gas station and humongous convenience store surrounded on three sides by hundreds of homes with gas pumps 70 feet from the closest properties will make Holland ugly, industrial, and it will become a rundown slum. The world is moving away from gasoline vehicles. California has stopped building gas stations completely, while Wawa continues to litter Bucks County with mega gas stations every mile. If Wawa is the good neighbor, they pretend to be, then why are they so lawyered up? Why does Wawa have to continue bullying their way through the townships? Most townships fight while Wawa just steamrolls on through. It is not about need, it is about Wawa's greed. 144 Hope Road, the property 70 feet from the 16, now 12 gas pumps, thank you, 12, whoa, that makes a difference. The Renati family is moving after living for almost two years, with the hell of knowing the safety and health of the Renati family will be jeopardized living in that house. A family in their beloved home for 21 years has been destroyed. To the Wright family, the Renati family has been your neighbor and mine for 21 years, but you don't care that you are destroying your next-door neighbor's lives. Glenn Wright, when a former classmate of yours reached out to you begging you to reconsider selling your neighbors out to Wawa, you ignored her with no response. Bob Wright, when another neighbor had a conversation with you about selling us out to Wawa, she reported that you had no empathy and was giddy at the prospect of the millions of dollars you will be making at the cost of destroying your hometown and your neighbor's lives. Those same neighbors who you enjoyed pleasant conversation with when walking your dog Romeo on Hope Road. Is the money worth it?
Go ahead, finish up, Pam.
Almost, one more paragraph. 25 years ago, the owner of the Hope Farm refused to allow Toll Brothers to destroy the 300-year-old farmhouse to build three more homes. The sale of the Hope Farm was contingent on the farmhouse not being razed. Today, we have that beautiful piece of Holland history to enjoy. That is integrity. And finally, to the Supervisors, the Northampton Township 2021 budget dated November 7, 2020, one year ago, states clearly that the Holland Village Master Plan is the blueprint for all development in Holland Village. There is no mention of a monstrous-sized gas station and mega convenience store with 60 parking spaces mentioned in that plan. Vote no to Super Wawa.
Thank you, Pam. Robbie, and then after that is James Cohen.
Robbie Grayo, 724 Buck Road, Holland, Pennsylvania. I'm talking about rat running. Rat running, rodent running, or cut-through driving is the practice that motorists using residential side streets instead of the intended main road in suburban areas. If a super Wawa goes in, rat running goes up. It's already started. Google Maps, Google Maps, Go, Waze, GPS Pilot, there's tons of GPS mapping apps that give you up-to-the-second cut-throughs right into our neighborhoods, all the side streets. Of all roads, neighborhood streets have the highest accident rate, and these accidents involve substantially higher percentage of pedestrians and cyclists when compared to those occurring on other roads. Children are coming and going from school to use our neighborhood roads, as do hundreds of residents who walk for health, and cyclists seeking to avoid the deadly speeds and road rage on Buck Road. Holland has a particularly high rate of families with school-aged children, as evidenced by the bigger elementary and middle schools townshipwide. Buck Road and Holland Road will become even more congested by Super Wawa's. All roads lead to Wawa. Your reconfiguration, new stoplight at Roxville Road will also add to it. This means increased cut-through traffic for us. It's already happening just as a result of the new reduction of speed to 25 Mallard Road, and we all do support that. We love the lower speed limits. Main road congestion is a result of poorly managed growth, and you, our Board of Supervisors, you're on the eve of making a decision that makes or breaks poorly managed growth in Holland by allowing another Super Wawa gas into our quaint neighborhood. Why, when there's one right down the street? Why not just improve that one? Mallard, Heron, Beverly, Morning Glory, Trailwood, Woodlake, Crestview, Pine View, Bruce, Lakeview, and Twist and other roads, all will see a significant increase in dangerous cut-through traffic. So if you vote to side with these lawyers, developers in Super Wawa, and push through their greedy desire to open up in an 85% residential area, then you vote to put families and children and pets at risk by death of motorists. Please protect our safety, keep our neighborhoods free of Wawa traffic. Please do your job and manage growth properly. We voted for you and trusted you to protect us. I matter, and my family matters, and all the residents of Holland matter, so do the right thing, and please vote against Wawa and Holland. It simply doesn't belong in our residential neighborhood or on this beautiful pastoral site.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Cohen, if you could just hold on for one second, I'm going to interject with a few written comments, so that I don't have to read them all at once. And I'm going to keep my mask off to make sure everybody can hear me, and I'll be as articulate as I can. Hello? Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments on the proposal for the Super Wawa in Holland. This is from Mark Routson, 78 South Timber Road. I have been a resident of Holland since 1994. I always liked the environment and atmosphere of Holland community. There are some small businesses and offices, but no large commercial establishments. I like that it is this way and prefer that it stay the way it is. Having the Super Wawa detracts from the serenity atmosphere of Holland. In addition to the traffic, in addition, the traffic in that area is frequently a problem with a logjam at the fork of Holland and Buck Roads. The Wawa will only exasperate the situation. Currently, traffic backs up on every road, often having to sit for several minutes. Wawa traffic would only bottleneck the area more. The Super Wawa in Richborough is on the main street of a heavily traveled commercial area. This location is very different from the Holland This location is very different from the Holland location. To maintain the environment of the community and keep traffic to a minimum as best as possible, as well as maintaining safety of residents, I'm strongly opposed to the proposed Super Wawa in Holland. Susan McRower, 27 Rocking Horse Way. Thank you to those that used a big font, by the way. To whom it may concern, the Holland Super Wawa project, should the Board of Supervisors vote to approve it, will have everlasting negative consequences on the people of Holland and every citizen of Northampton Township. If you vote to approve this disastrous project, you are giving the green light to Pravco and Wawa to build their mega gas stations on any plot of land that is owned commercial, no matter how inappropriate the location is. In Holland, the proposed Wawa with 16 gas pumps and 64,000 gallons of fuel will be just 70 feet from homes. A vote to approve this is a vote to approve Super Wawa's within close proximity to anyone's home in the township. If you say that mega gas station 70 feet from homes is acceptable, Wawa's next objective will be to build their monstrosities 50 feet from houses, and then 30. What will stop Wawa from shoving these mega gas stations wherever they want in the township? Nothing will, except a no vote from you. If you stop this madness now and down the idiocy of your voice of disapproval, Pravco and Wawa will realize that Northampton Township will not allow projects like this to be built in inappropriate locations. But if you do not, they will eat up every last bit of land in this township, and your legacy will be supervisors who perpetrated the downfall of Holland. Don't let it get to that. Vote no now, and save your legacy while also saving your constituents. It's really that simple. Kevin and Karen Feen, 28 Swallow Road in Holland. I live in, I have lived in Holland and Churchville for 46 years, I know the intersection of Holland Road and Buck Road has always been a problem. If you are heading on Buck Road toward Feasterville, you will be stuck for several lights. Most people cut through gas stations or cut across Roxsville Road, especially if they are headed to the Wawa Shopping Center. Not only will this Wawa fix the road at their cost, but it will also provide a place to purchase gas safely and at a fair price. Diana Lefervich, 30 Brianna Road in Holland. Why do we need a huge Wawa? How does the township benefit from this Wawa when there is already one in the township? This will be my last one, then Mr. Cohen can come up. Last one for a while. This is Robert Churkin, 51 Netherlands Drive in Holland. I love all, almost all of the new Super Wawa's I've been frequenting in New Jersey and PA, including the one in nearby Richborough. They provide easy access to the variety of foods inside, multiple pumps for gas, an air pump, and propane for barbecues. All of the new Super Wawa's along Route 202 in Delaware and PA, as well as those in New Jersey along Route 42, are on major highways and understandably in high-traffic, high-volume areas. I continue to avoid the nearby Super Wawa at Street and Busselton because of the awkward in-and-out to either of the high-volume roads at the corner. I do frequent the Super Wawa along Street Road. The proposed Super Wawa in Holland would create a problem similar to the situation on Street and Busselton, as just described, and would likely contribute to longer lines at traffic light where Holland and, where Holland Road and Route 532 converge. In my experience, it would also be the first Super Wawa I've ever seen that was not built on a highway or high-traffic road, and much too close to so many private homes. For all of the above reasons, I would ask you to vote no on the proposed Super Wawa in Holland. Thank you. Okay, James Cohen, you're up, and then Silvio Cruz, you're on deck. Thank you.
Saying I'm up sounds like a boxing man. James Cohen, 431 Upper Holland Road, Richborough, PA. Hello and good evening. I refer to my letter of November 7th, 2021, which I sent to everybody in this room, on the board, by email, and also by hand to the Township Municipal Building. It is addressed to Mr. Pellegrino and copied to the Board of Supervisors. In addition to the handwritten receipt provided to me when it was dropped off, I've also had acknowledges of receipt from one or two of you on board. Thank you very much for that. I present two copies as my public comment, but won't read it in the interest of time. It is 17 pages, which is why I sent it on Sunday, and I trust that everyone has studied it thoroughly.
I think we have, we have them. Okay, I'll take it from you, thanks. I just don't want you to lose up your time. Go ahead.
I do have comments, it's mostly from the Sunshine Act on Pennsylvania, but I would cede that time if anyone has questions on the document which I sent to you, which I hope you have read and had time to review. There's a lot of detail, and includes the waiver that was put in, it includes the ordinances it references, it includes ordinances related to the ordinances which it references, and there's a discussion on each and every waiver, followed by an objection to the waiver. I trust that somebody would have a question on this.
This is comment time, so keep, keep making your comments. Thank you.
The comment is that I hope there are questions, I have not received any.
And, and we do thank you for the time you did put into putting that document together.
There are a few typos in the document, I'm hoping that they're self-explanatory, they're fairly obvious, so I won't go through those. The other thing is, I just want to read from 17.1 of the Pennsylvania Consolidated Statutes on Public Participation. I note we have a three-minute limit, everybody has a three-minute limit, and there's a 300-word limit for any written comments. General rule, this is paragraph A. Except as provided in subchecks in D, the Board or Council of a political subdivision or of an authority created by a political subdivision shall provide a reasonable opportunity at each advertised regular meeting and advertised special meeting for residents of the political subdivision or of the authority created by a political subdivision, or for taxpayers of the political subdivision or the authority created by a political subdivision, or for both, to comment on matters concerned, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before the Board or Council. Prior to taking official action, the Board or Council has the option to accept all public comment at the beginning of the meeting. The beginning. If the Board or Council determines that there is not sufficient time at a meeting for residents of the political subdivision or of the authority created by a political subdivision, or for taxpayers of the political subdivision or the authority created by a political subdivision, I didn't write this, or for both to comment, the Board or Council may defer the comment period to the next regular meeting or to a special meeting occurring in advance of the next regular meeting. I'll now skip to sub-paragraph C, which I also read for everyone for the benefit who are participating in this hearing.
Just try to wrap it up, if you don't mind, please.
C, objection, the title of the paragraph is objection. Any person has the right to raise an objection at any time to a perceived violation of this chapter at any meeting of a Board or Council of a political subdivision or an authority created by a political subdivision. This all relates to the ability to give comments in a timely manner, not to be cut short, and if the time is not available, then to defer the meeting for another time. Thank you.
Thank you. Silvio Cruz, and then up next is Brett Duffy. Your name and address for the record, please.
Silvio Cruz, 327 Buck Road, Holland. Good evening, everyone. My name is Silvio Cruz, I live at 327 Buck Road, the single house opposite the Hope Road Development. I came to Holland from Somerton in Philly in 2004 with my wife and three kids. We decided to settle here because of the school district of Council Rock, which at the time was one of the best school districts in PA. I don't think it is anymore, although I can tell because of my school taxes have been going up $300 or $400 every year since I moved here. In regards to the Wawa that we are discussing with debating tonight, since I've been here for 17 years, I have seen a lot of accidents at that intersection of Buck Road and Roxsville Road. Everyone who lives here, close to that intersection, knows it well. The hills on the road make it a precarious intersection to cross. I was a victim of that intersection in 2015, and I live here. We all know that it's a dangerous intersection, and the Wawa construction will only make it worse. We all know that to be true, that's why the redesign of the road to accommodate the proposal of the Wawa. It seems, it seems we are going to build a roundabout like they have in Europe with a Wawa in the middle. How convenient, nobody will miss it. This little village will be known as Wawa Land instead of Holland. If traffic was not an issue then, why we do the roads?
Silvio, excuse me, we lost the feed. You lost the feed outside? Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Cruz.
Leave them as they are. We've lived with it for all these years, why worry about it now? There was no redesign for the Wawa, for the streets on Wawa, on Busselton and Street Road, Street Road and Felmont, the Wawa near Parks Casino, even the one in Richborough, which by the way, I don't believe there was any pushback from the citizens on any of those locations. If traffic would not be an issue, then leave the roads as they are and just do an entrance and an exit, like the Pheasant Valley has, which has a lot of little businesses. The type of business that should be on that lot, not a 24/7 Super Wawa with non, with non-stop traffic noise, toxins emitted all the time. I pass by the Wawa in Philly at Busselton and Tomlinson every morning and afternoon. It's always packed. This location is not Street Road, unless we turn it into one. There is a Wawa practically every half to one mile around us. Last time I checked, I haven't seen anyone walk into a Wawa with a gasoline can on their hands because they ran out of gas. Are we going to ruin this little village for a matter of a little shopping convenience? In the last few weeks, we have heard about crimes committed in these Wawa's, South Philly and in Norristown. But I know, I guess, we are not exempt from the crime in this little village, we are not. Another thing are the toxins. I know someone who had, had to have a bone marrow transplant because of the benzene. Luckily, he got a match, or else he wouldn't be here today. Am I also supposed to believe that due to the tax revenue from this Wawa, we residents will now get a property tax refund of $300 or $400? So tonight, I am imploring members of this board to vote no on the, on the project that is going to impact us all in a very negative way. The village planners did not envision it, and I hope we won't have to live with it either. It does not belong here. If this project goes through, I think I would feel safer living next to the Limerick Nuclear Power Plant. Thank you for your time. Do the right thing on the right property. Do the right thing for your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Brett Duffy, and Dawn White is on deck. Is Dawn White in the room? Okay, thank you. Name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Hi, my name is Brett Duffy, 125 Hope Road, you probably know me at this point, hopefully. First, I just want to thank Mr. Selisker, Dr. Rose, and Mr. O'Donnell for caring enough about this project to ask questions to the developer. Unfortunately, I cannot say the same about Ms. Silver. Tonight, the Northampton Township Board of Supervisors will vote on the Holland Super Wawa disaster. I am here to tell you that the future of Holland is quite literally at stake. The future of a quaint and bucolic village that our township is currently considering destroying. The future of a whole generation of young residents of this township who will be at risk each and every day thanks to roads that cannot handle traffic volume and cancer-causing benzene fumes that don't stop invading lungs with a small barrier of trees. And sorry if I missed it, I don't think your trees stop the benzene fumes. I don't, I don't care how many trees you have, they're not stopping the benzene fumes. There's no plan to address that, it's a disgrace that you would even consider this. The future of the political careers of the township employees and supervisors who must decide whether or not to allow this monstrosity to be built, and the future of the children who will essentially be putting their lives on the line just to walk to school thanks to impatient and reckless Super Wawa drivers. Make no mistake, a yes vote on this project means that the Northampton Township Board of Supervisors is openly and fearlessly giving the middle finger to each and every one of its constituents who live in Holland. Adam Selisker, Frank O'Donnell, Eileen Silver, and Kim Rose, if they vote to approve this, will have a legacy of unabashed negligence and a dereliction of duty to protect their citizens no matter what. I want to highlight the morality or lack thereof of building a mega gas station just 70 feet from homes. According to the Environmental Protection Agency, all of the following can be attributed to a gas station: toxic and contaminated water runoff, cancer-causing fumes, noise, light, and air pollution, contaminated well water, soil erosion, and an abundance of refuse and vermin. I would like you to process what I just said and then consider if any of the citizens of Holland deserve that. The people against this project would never support the, the building of this kind of detrimental mega structure 70 feet from your house, so it makes me wonder why this board has so little empathy for their citizens when they speak out against this. One of Northampton Township's longest-serving supervisors said at a June meeting of the board, if something's just not right, you vote against it. Well, here is your chance, all of you, to follow through with that promise. Vote no on this project for the sanctity and preservation of the, of the well-being of your constituents and our community. Keep your word and take the concerns people have regarding this issue as serious as you take delayed trash pickup. Remember that yard waste can be removed with the flick of a hand, but a mega gas station you vote to approve will be the shining star of your unfortunate legacy and the hell that you perpetuated by voting yes on this disaster. Finally, I want the Board of Supervisors to know that the people in this room fighting this overwhelmingly flawed proposal and the more than 2,825 people who have signed a petition against this will never, to stop this, rather, will never forget your vote on this issue. Should you vote against this, you will be universally lauded, lauded and appreciated by a township's worth of grateful citizens. You will be held up as role models for future iterations of boards to emulate, and you will be personally thanked by hundreds, if not thousands, of citizens who recognize that you made the right decision. But on the other hand, if you vote to approve this eyesore, you will be held accountable forever. The residents of Northampton Township who are against this project will summarily oppose any and all future campaigns you intend to run, and we will inform every voter of this municipality of your chronic misdeed, and it will be evident that you have absolutely no concern for your constituents. Final, and we will personally make sure that every last person who signed that petition never supports you again. Your career and reputation as a whole is really at stake tonight, so be informed of these consequences as you prepare to vote on this project. Regardless of the decision you make, your constituents, including myself, have spoken. We say no.
Go ahead and finish up. Thank you. Dawn White, and then Alyssa White, are you in the room? Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm a little short.
All right, you can pull the mic down a little bit. There you go. Now your name and address for the record.
My name is Dawn White, I live at 27 Wood Drive, Holland, PA. I've lived here on and off for mostly 50 years. I want to look more like to the future. When you drive into Holland, you see the old gas station there, the Shell, and it's empty and it's going to stay empty for, we have no idea when. There's the mill race that sits there, empty. You know, these places are going to be there. Then this new Wawa goes up, and the gas station will still be there, empty. Obviously, nobody's going to put another gas station there because they don't want to be right next to a Wawa gas station. The old Wawa will be sitting there, empty. We're going to have all this empty stuff sitting there, not being used. The, the old Wawa will be, the old tanks rotting in the ground. I, I just, I can't under, I can't even fathom what it's going to be like down there. To have this big giant Wawa with bright lights open 24 hours a day, trucks coming in and out, it, it doesn't make any sense to me because Wawa, I mean, Holland is a sleepy town. I mean, we have a couple bars that are open, like, but the shopping centers close, the roads, I mean, everybody's gone, everybody's asleep. I mean, what's the point of having a 24-hour Wawa in Holland? And, and to poison children with benzene, it just doesn't make any sense to me, and that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Alyssa White? Oh my, is that Clint? Is that the right, is that right?
Glenn, Glenn.
Kingsway?
Yeah.
Okay, you'll be up next. I'm sorry, I can't read the writing. Your name and address for the record, thanks.
Alyssa White, also 27 Wood Drive. Obviously, I haven't been here as long as 50 years, but I, I would like to actually look a little bit more to the past. I do have a myriad of concerns with a gas station going into the area. Some of my concerns include preserving the area for the future, but also with that preservation includes the past as well. And I, I believe that that is a little bit of an old-fashioned notion in these days because it seems more and more of history is being destroyed or erased. And once that history is gone, it's gone. Now, I understand that where the Super Wawa gas station wants to go in at the moment doesn't have much of a history because it's an open field, but there is history all around it. There's Chinkapin, which includes a lot of historic homes. There's the historic home that was preserved on Hope Road, and there are historic buildings below the gas station area, right in the gateway to Holland area, as some people refer to it. There is the old Greyst Mill, which is now the, yeah, which is now the defunct mill race. And there are a lot of old buildings right on either side of that tiny, tiny little bridge that goes over there. Now, these buildings go right up against the road, basically, and if a gas station goes in, it will bring a lot more traffic, a lot more. And that is the point of it. It wants to bring more traffic to the area because it's a business. Now, if that more traffic goes in the area, they'll have to widen the road. How are you going to widen the road when there- How are you going to widen the road when there are historic homes and businesses that are right along that road? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for speaking. And next on deck is Diane Mrazo.
Hi, my name is Clement John.
And your address for the record, thanks.
Clement John.
And your address?
8 Kingsway Drive.
8 Kingsway? Thank you.
I live on the Buck Road, on the Buck Road. So many points have been said. I don't want to make it over and over again. Traffic, safety, air pollution, everything. I moved from northeast Philadelphia to Holland thinking that I'll have a good education for my daughter, where she attended the elementary, you know, middle school and high school. So many people have said, I don't think, none of the folks representing here live at this place at all. You guys don't live here. And I'm making it very point-blank. There are so many other ways to make money, but not at my backyard. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Mrazo, and then Jerry Duffy, you're up next. Diane here?
Here she comes.
She's coming later.
She's here.
She's here.
Oh, sorry. So, hi.
Your name and address for the record. Do you live in Northampton?
I don't live in Northampton. So...
However, she is working out of Rocksville district.
Yeah.
Thanks. I just asked a question.
Okay, so I'm Diane Mrazo, 2423 Second Street Pike, Newtown. So these people are my neighbors, so it's just a community reference. Like, if we keep allowing for these Wawas to come in one mile, 1.2 miles away from each other, like, they're just going to completely obliterate our area. Like, we don't hate Wawa. These people don't hate Wawa. They just want to see Wawa, like, further away. It's not the right location. And, you know, I just wish they would hear it. So they all have homes somewhere, as everyone here does. You wouldn't want it in your own backyard. I would hate to be anybody that lives on Hope Road or in that neighborhood or anywhere around there. I wouldn't want to worry about it for myself or for my kids. And it's just not right. It's just not the right location. So I hope you take it all into consideration, and you guys vote the right way. These are the people paying you, they want you in, they want you to voice in the right direction for them. That's all.
Thank you. Jerry Duffy's next, and then is there another Diane Mrazo from Mill Creek Road? Is that possible? Somebody from 1064 Mill Creek Road. So if you are out there, please make your way to the podium.
Okay, thank you.
Your name and address again, Jerry, thanks.
Jerry Duffy, 125 Hope Road. So thank you for this hearing tonight for the residents of Holland. I want to start by saying I consider the applicant's presentation absurd. All I heard from the applicant was numerous reasons why this is a bad idea. They were telling that to us. First, I'd like to refute some of the things they said. Mr. Louveney said the land was zoned for a gas station? Correct, but never a mega gas station. They didn't even exist in 1954 when the land was zoned commercial C2. 20 years ago, there was no mega gas stations in existence in Bucks County. You said it was always zoned for a gas station. The zoning should have been changed when the land was evolved into a largely residential area, and that's where our zoning commission failed us. You mentioned limited ingress and egress, Mr. Van Louveney, as if that was an advantage to this site. That introduces many logistical traffic problems. It causes more problems to have limited egress. You made an assumption that traffic won't use Hope Road. That's a false assumption. They might not come out on the Roxsville and go right up Hope Road. They will come out on the Holland and go up and come back down Hope Road to go south. They have no other way. That's all the cut-through traffic that you heard tonight, that will happen. I heard that you mentioned adding trees along Roxsville, as if that would, that landscaping would be advantageous to us. We don't care about landscaping. We care about 50,000 gallons of fuel in the ground 70 feet from our homes. That's what we care about. Landscaping's not going to change that. You mentioned that it was surrounded on roads on four sides. That's incorrect. The Super Wawa in Richborough was surrounded by four roads. Holland is surrounded by three roads, two of which are major traffic roads, and the other is small Roxsville road. That is another major problem, that it's sandwiched in a triangular geographic footprint. One of the other gentlemen mentioned, they talked about gas pumps, and we were going to electric, didn't have anything to say about what happens to all the gas. What happens to the pumps? What happens to the gas in the land, in the ground? Trucks idling for, you said five minutes. Trucks have, I see Super Wawa trucks idling at the current Wawa in Holland and at the one in Richborough for an hour next to signs that say no idling. That fumes, that exhaust just keeps pumping out. We're going to be 70 feet from that, an hour. Those fumes, that exhaust, it's not just benzene, it's exhaust, constant. A sign doesn't stop it. It's not five minutes, it's an hour or more. 24-hour operation will create all kinds of problems with people during the night. There'll be an increase in crime. There's been ample evidence just the past year of gas convenience stores in Montgomery and Philadelphia counties. Convenience stores and 24-hour businesses provide the opportunity for lawbreakers that isn't there now. A business with cash in its registers and open 24 hours will be a magnet. Fuel delivery at any time. You didn't have a specific. At any time, when the gas, the fuel gets so low, you know what, they'll be coming? They'll be coming in the middle of the night, a little bit more, middle of the night, on roads that are windy. I've already said this several times. Holland Road is dark and windy, and what we're going to face is an overturned tanker truck that's going to cause a fire, and there's nothing, no gas, no grass, no trees, no cornstalks are going to stop that fire from reaching our homes. They're only a couple hundred feet away from these pumps that are there and these gas and these fuel tanks that are coming in. And finally, there'll be increased blight. And not just businesses like Madison Cafe and Holland Deli that won't be able to compete, boarded-up businesses, but it's people losing their jobs. It's Holland homeowners. It's people, residents out of work. I know that the mechanic at the gas station, the Shell gas station, he's now out of work because the Shell closed. And that's the effect the Super Wawa will have. So what I'm trying to say is that zoning is a factor, but it should not be the only factor in the decision to approve this station. You have to consider all the impacts, and your decision today will affect a lot of people for many years to come. Please make the responsible decision. I'll end with this. If someone standing in front of you at a store drops $5 and doesn't notice, you could pocket it, but the right thing to do is to give it back to them. Just because you can do something doesn't mean you should. Just because the zoning or Profco tells you to vote yes for this Super Wawa does not mean it's the correct decision for the community. Consider the consequences. Please vote no against this colossal mistake.
Thank you, Jerry. Is there another Diane Mrazo from?
No, there can't be two of them.
I think she was waiting to say that. Yeah, that's fine. I'm going to read a few more comments, please. Dear Board of Supervisors, this is from Joan Marie Palmer, 225 Heron Place. Dear Board of Supervisors, Northampton Township is prepared to vote on the Holland Super Wawa proposal tonight. What has not been discussed here is the potential conflicts of interest several individuals associated with the township have with Wawa. It is believed that one of the supervisors who will vote on this project actually has direct business dealings with Wawa and may stand to benefit should it be built. This person should be absolutely recuse himself tonight, but count on me as skeptical that this will actually happen. I think we've answered that question. Thank you. But how did it come to this? Why are we sitting here tonight in front of an individual who potentially has a stake in this project and may want it to be approved? I think we've already answered that. How is the township's credibility sunk so low? Why is the transparency that is so often talked up by the folks lost in Wawa transit? And above all, why does Profco and Wawa have the right to push around Northampton Township as if they were a stepchild? I'll tell you why. Because Northampton Township cares little for their constituents. They care about tax revenue and scoring political points, not normal people like me. And the only thing that is going to change, that is no vote on this project. That is a no vote on this project. You have the ability tonight, the ability to wash away the negative karma that you have accumulated through the years of what I perceive as questionable behavior. Right the wrongs of the past by doing the right thing and voting no on this disaster. Taking a note for later. Cynthia Bergamony, 6 East Rambler Drive. Hi, I just wanted to let you know that the location for Wawa is very dangerous. I was driving on Buck Road where the speed limit was changed to 25 miles an hour near Mallard. I had a vehicle right on my rear bumper, then they passed me on the shoulder of the road just to be in front of me at the red light. This is so dangerous, no one goes to speed limit. There are so many accidents in that area. Plus, how close to homes the Wawa would be. Nice, quiet Holland will no longer be quiet. Please don't let them build the Super Wawa. Kenneth Moore, 85 Sidney Road, Holland. I do not live especially close to the proposed Wawa, Super Wawa, but I understand and sympathize with the Holland residents who would have to live near the site. These families have voiced their concerns better than I could. I write only to ask that the Board of Supervisors will thoroughly weigh the benefits of the Wawa proposal to all parties, including the community at large. We can assume that Wawa recognizes the benefit of a large store with gas pumps on this desirable commercial property. The selling property owner certainly would benefit from the deal. The families in the immediate vicinity have clearly said they foresee no benefit at all and only negative consequences. What about the benefits to the community at large? Does Northampton need another convenience store in this area? There are already two within 100 to 200 yards of the proposed site, one of them belonging to Wawa. Does Northampton need a gas station in this area? There is now a Shell station a stone's throw away. There would certainly be a benefit to the township in the form of increased tax ratables if the site is commercially developed, but a Super Wawa is not the only use that can provide that benefit. Factor in the negative effects to the community at large, and increased traffic will be a major drawback in congested area where safety is already a concern. And the Wawa proposal looks like a clear loser for Northampton. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. Jeffrey Gwynn, 70 West Rambler Drive in Holland. Good evening, Board of Supervisors and neighbors in Holland, PA. When I was a young boy, we often traveled from Philadelphia to my Uncle Bill Grady's home in Churchville. I enjoyed seeing the open but growing township of Northampton. My cousins enjoyed serving their neighbors throughout the township with their lawn service and landscaping business, Grady Brothers. They even sold many of the township homeowners Christmas trees in the winter from their location on Second Street Pike. Always with a friendly and caring nature. This is what Northampton Township is made of, people that come together to support and help their fellow neighbors. We are asking that you apply the same beliefs that those in this room have expressed. Allowing Wawa Profco to come into Holland and build a gasoline station with 16 pumps and a convenience store is against these beliefs. This will destroy the community and add additional properties to be blighted. We all know that Wawa brings big money, but they also bring crime and destruction of the community. This location is surrounded by beautiful homes that are well taken care of by residents. They do this because they love their community. They are the welcome to the township which draws others to live here. Wawa does not offer this, just the money, crime, and destruction of a beautiful community. Please vote no. You hold our future in your hands. Thank you for your time. Chris Nice, 19 Hope Road. Thank you for the opportunity to make comments on the Wawa proposal. I urged the board to oppose this. As a nearby resident on Hope Road, I offer the following points. Locating a large gas station adjacent to residents is wrong on the face of it. I'm not aware of any such placement elsewhere, pardon me, as large Wawas are always, in my experience, located in commercial areas adjacent to commercial properties. While Northampton Township, the zoning, has been interpreted to allow this, I've read the zoning and development plan, and no reasonable layman would come to an understanding a large gas station would be allowed. It is a main responsibility of the board to prevent irreversible public harm to a large number of township residents. Allowing this proposal would cause that harm. Traffic in an already congested area will be greatly increased. Super Wawa always seems to be a gathering place for idle teens who harass others. Crime in adjacent areas is sure to increase. Noise and light pollution result from 24-hour operation. All these things reduce property values in adjacent and nearby areas and comparable prices elsewhere in the township. It is also directly uphill and very close to a natural watershed, and benzene and gasoline will almost certainly find its way downhill. I urge the board to drive Holland and Buck Road and see this signage. This is strongly opposed by the residents and constituents of the board. In short, this is inappropriate proposal, and board needs to react in protection of the residents and oppose this proposal. It is the right of Northampton Township residents to expect this. Okay, Shane Duffy. I should have said that before, I'm sorry. And after Shane is Carol Reifsteck. Okay. Here comes Shane, and then Carol, you're on deck.
No, only you.
And your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Shane Duffy, 125 Hope Road. So I'd like to start off saying, I always felt lucky to live near an open green space in Holland, a tranquil community at the southern end of Northampton Township. I thought it was nice that I could look out my kitchen window and see trees instead of a shopping center. I thought it was nice that there was peaceful darkness at night instead of beaming lights from commercial areas flooding into my home. I thought all of this was nice. And then, I heard about the plans to build a Holland Super Wawa. I wondered why an area such as this needed a 24/7 Wawa convenience store gas station when there were five of them within a five-mile radius of my home already. And then I heard that Wawa planned to build their new store on the Wright property, a historic piece of land that has never been developed. It was at this point I realized the overwhelming detriment that would be caused should this plan move forward. It wasn't that 16 gas pumps with 64,000 gallons of fuel will be stored 700 feet from my neighbor's house, or the benzene fumes and toxic runoff from the new gas pumps will run right into Shammany Creek and into the ground to afflict people's drinking water. And may I just say, tonight was a watershed moment for me because I saw in Chris detail the layout of the plan. I had seen it before, but to see the way the roads were constructed and laid out, it showed to me not only, because there had been a lot of emotions around my parents wondering, the people who are involved with this, what is their reasoning with it? Is it just greed, cruelty, indifference, which may be worse? But no, it's just stupidity. Anybody who's driven Holland or Buck Road knows that that is insane, that you can put something of that size with the traffic that already exists. It borders on the absurd. It seems to me that the answer to this dilemma is simple. The township needs to side with its residents publicly and legally. Then you need to take the fight directly to Profco and Wawa and say without hesitation that this product cannot move forward in its current form. This is, in fact, the only way to prevent Wawas from running amok even more than they have in the township. I mean, what will happen when this Wawa is built? Profco will turn around and scoop up every piece of land that is zoned inappropriately and put one of their eyesores on it. And as a student who graduated from Penn State Abington, I had the ability to do multiple SWAN analysis of Wawa, it's a business that I did projects on, and I know the nature of their business. Their goal at the end of the day is to put one of these at every corner, every mile, until they're oversaturated, or until Sheetz buries them, which it might. But frankly, that's the nature of what's going on. Somebody needs to put their foot down and decide whether Holland has continued to be a place of tranquility or another urban hellhole that everyone in this area has tried to escape. And as somebody who was born in Philadelphia and whose parents moved here, I know the nature of being blessed to live in an area such as this. I ask that you act with fortitude and courage that comes with your position and vote no on this. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Carol Reifsteck. I live at 54...
Just wanted to make sure. Bar scan echo, 75 Hope Road.
That's okay. My name is Carol Reifsteck. I live at 54 Twist Drive. And I come here again tonight to really talk to you personally, all of you, and then also to kind of reiterate what I spoke about the last time we were here. I've been an oncology nurse for 30 years, more than 30 years, and I want to continue educating and advocating for my community. And I want to just stress, it was mentioned a lot tonight about the benzene exposure. I do have studies to back that up, that it's not good for our community. The EPA Clears Act, Air Act, defines that as a hazardous pollutant. And I want to talk about exposure and how that will happen in our community, because maybe none of you really know that. And I can't believe, I still believe in the goodness of human beings, that they wouldn't want to impose this into our community. So exposure of benzene and other toxins that are found in the gas can be both liquid or vapors. And this can occur, the exposure of it during delivery through the trucks, whether you're saying it's a closed system or not, there's vapors that come out. The storage of it underground, there's venting that comes up into the atmosphere that releases gas every time somebody pumps it. And there's also venting underneath that releases that benzene into the soil near there. This can affect the groundwater, and that can go in and affect our water that we could potentially drink. We have a lot of well water that still exist, well users in this community. It will affect that. Exposure to the general population, you know, exists with our, with the way we live in the United States. But the highest exposed group are those living near a large service center, station, and those with the potential of contaminated water. I want to talk about what the average exposure in the general population is. And it's defined as something called parts per billion, so PPB. 1.7 to 2.2 PPB is what the normal population is exposed to. Those living near gas stations, it goes up to 146, not point, not one, 146 to 461 PPBs. And it's worse in the summertime than it is in the winter. 9.4 PPBs of exposure is when your white cells are affected, or your red cells, or your bone marrow is affected. This is pretty scary. This is pretty scary. Studies that analyze the association between potential environmental exposure to hydrocarbons and the risk of acute childhood leukemia were found to have that association. I was going to talk about indoor exposure, when you have outdoor exposure, when you live near a gas station, how it affects your indoor. It puts people within 70 feet of a gas station at increased risk. But it also talks about how like the venting of underground gasoline constitute a health concern for up to distances of over 500 feet. And I read articles of over 600 to 800 feet of living here. There's a lot of homes that are affected. Emissions were 10 times higher, as the doctor talked about. You know, the tank, the system has flaws. There's been measures that the EPA has tried to instill. The one measure that was the, to resolve the health threat doesn't even exist in most places anymore. It stopped in 2012. Now there's a stage-two vapor recovery. Studies show in 2020 that 88% of the vehicles monitored during this study still had vapors that came out. We really can't depend on you to really protect and resolve these health and safety threats to our people living. And I'm just hoping that you really just withdraw. And maybe it wouldn't even come to a vote. But I do have confidence in all of you, that you're really going to look out for us. I really do. I have a, like, I know that people are good, you know, and I know that you're going to vote no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Barb, you're up. And then Arvin Kavali, you're next.
Good evening, Board of Supervisors. My name's Barb Scanapico. I reside at 75 Hope Road, where I've lived happily these past 22 years. Over the last several months, I've written to you several times to voice my opposition to the proposed Super Wawa plan. And for the most part, my emails have remained unacknowledged, so I'm going to share some of my concerns here tonight in the hopes that you'll give them due consideration. Let me be clear, I'm not against Wawa. In fact, I drink Wawa coffee every day. This is about the proposed location and doing what's best for the residents that live, vote, and pay taxes here. As members of the Planning Commission opined on April 13th, and I quote, "This project that is being presented here encroaches directly upon a huge residential area with hundreds of houses. The master plan viewed this parcel a whole lot differently than what we're looking at now. This part of land was meant to be more of a buffer to the residential areas. This couldn't be more opposite of what's going, what this is going to be. The Planning Commission got it right with their unanimous vote against this land use application. Now it is your turn, and I implore you to thoughtfully consider and weigh all the implications: safety, environmental, quality of life, land values, traffic." And I, and ask yourself this very basic question: When and under what circumstances would any reasonable and logical person ever, ever consider it to be a good idea to store 60,000-plus gallons of gasoline in such close proximity to a residential area? It's unconscionable that storing that much gasoline within 70 feet of homes could ever be a permitted use. And if, as a zoning board officer claims this is a permitted use, I would argue they have absolutely failed this community. As you know, the zoning board official that approved this use cited the Richborough Super Wawa as the precedent for his determination. Clearly, aside from similar historic zoning, these sites couldn't be more different. The Richborough Wawa is not smack dab in the middle of an existing residential area. The simple fact that the Richborough Wawa zoning determination wasn't challenged doesn't mean it was the correct determination, and to rely heavily on that fact as critical to their conclusion here in Holland is egregious. Wawa's attorney and the Northampton zoning board official claimed the proposed Super Wawa is a convenience store with gas as an accessory use, which is permitted by right, yet Wawa's very own CEO brags about Wawa being number one in fuel sales in all the counties they're in. It doesn't sound like an accessory use. In addition, Wawa's attorney, Ms. Von Speckelson, previously talked about the complexities and difficulties of the site and trying to make it comply within existing guidelines, yet still requires no less than 13 waivers to ordinances. I say, if it doesn't fit, don't allow it. Make Wawa be the good corporate citizen they claim to be, and you be the public servant you were elected to be, and find a better, more appropriate location for this. Follow the Holland Village Master Plan and beautify this area, don't destroy it. Please don't sacrifice the quality of life and the property values of the residents you claim to serve for the convenience of those passing through. You're not bound by the erroneous determination of the zoning board. You have the right and the power to appeal that decision to the courts. So in closing, I implore you to ask yourself, what is the right thing to do here? And if you have a conscience and you take seriously your duty as a public servant, I am confident you have only one option, and that is to stand with the Planning Commission and say no to Wawa.
Thank you. Arvin Kavali. And next up is Jeff, I'm sorry, I don't, can't read your last name, from Stallion Circle. Jeff from Stallion Circle, if you're in the other room or out in the lobby area, make your way into the room. Thank you. Your name and address for the record.
Arvin Kavali, 90 Hope Road. I am one of the other physicians, one of four physicians living on Hope Road, right across from where this proposed gas station is being talked about. And before I speak, I just want to say, you know, my words in this written document don't reflect my normal methods of communicating, but it just reflects my anger and passion about this issue. So, having said that, I appreciate your, this opportunity to address this board. I've served as a physician in this community and resided on Hope Road for 22 years. And as I followed the development of these plans for this gas station, I'm really concerned that our taxpayer-paid zoning officer deemed a gas station to be a retail store. Stonewalled our neighbors inquiring about such a proposal for almost six months. Now we know from Mr. Van Louveney that this was more than six months. And he was the only witness permitted to speak at the now infamous zoning hearing board meeting of April 2021. In short, a single township bureaucrat's action could lead to permanent negative impacts on the lives of thousands of current and future residents of Holland. It is now up to you, the elected supervisors, to correct this injustice. In my 25 years of practice, and as we speak of and commemorate our veterans tomorrow, I've had the difficult task of treating some of our veterans who continue to suffer terrible impacts of Agent Orange nearly 50 years after exposure. It's not a stretch to say that the environmental impacts of such a massive gas station can have for, on people living across the street from such a gas station for a very, very long time. Does it really matter if, whether the gasoline is dispensed by a retail store or a gas station? I don't think so. The multiple iterations of the engineering drawings from Profco for this gas station gives me the sense that Profco is trying to fit a Shaquille O'Neal into a Smart Forte car, right? Simply put, this gas station is clearly not the wrong thing at the wrong place at the wrong time. If this gas station is to be developed in our quiet neighborhood, it will become like New York City or Philadelphia. And I don't need to belabor everybody else's statements, so I'm not going to say that. However, I do think that, I don't think that anybody wishes to see such an impact on this community, not even Mr. Wright, who enjoyed his walks along Hope Road with his dog Romeo just a couple of years ago. And we have talked to him a lot of times. I acknowledge a landowner's right to develop his land, but a gas station is not what the Holland Village Master Plan said in its recommendations in 2014, contradictory to the attorney's suggestions. The zoning board's decision, just one more paragraph. The zoning board's decision to support its zoning officer was obviously based on a similar plan in Richborough. And like everybody else has said before, just to belabor the obvious, the closest home to that Wawa is 500 feet away. Using the same logic, the least this board could do is require a 500-feet distance from, of any gas station, gas tank, to the nearest home. The southern half of this property, obviously, now adjacent to the closed gas station, is of the same size and can potentially be used for the same purpose with a similar return on investment for the owner. And the northern half could then be designated as a buffer zone. Why not make this happen as a win-win situation? And finally, I'd like to end my testimony by really reflecting on the community's disappointment and frustration with the secretive and rude manner in which the Northampton Township's bureaucracy has handled this issue. I have personally lost trust in all the three gentlemen, the zoning officer, the township manager, and the solicitor of this township. The elections of '21 are over. It's time for our elected leaders to engage in actions that rebuild the community's trust in our institutions and its public servants. A decision by this board to not permit construction of this gas station will go a long way towards that goal. In the end, the simple question is, is a gas station a gas station? I realize your predicament, and I'm very sympathetic to it. One decision will satisfy your solicitor, the other one will keep this board relevant within the community it serves. I pray today for divine intervention while you deliberate on this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Jeff from Stallion Circle here?
What's, oh, yes, I'm here. What, Jeff?
It's Jeff. I really can't read the last name. And Sharon Furlong is next. Is Sharon in the room? So while they're, while they're doing that, I'm going to read some additional comments. This is Roman Gurvich from 180 Roxville Road. Hello, I'm writing to express my strong opposition to the proposed Wawa between Holland Road and Buck Road. As someone who has lived in the area for several years, I can definitively say that there are literally zero positive benefits, I'm sorry, and a plethora of negative consequences related to this proposal. First and foremost, such a large development, especially one geared toward vehicles, would bring with it excessive traffic into a small community, leading to increased pollution and higher chances of accidents. As such, the most important concern is that of the safety of myself and those around me. This does not even include the associated noise and light pollution that the development would bring. Next, this one development would single-handedly turn the area from a nice and quiet neighborhood into a busy commercial area. When my family purchased our house in the area, it was based on the zoning in place at the time and our anticipation and desire to live in a quiet residential area. This Wawa would fully ruin that and should not be allowed due to the zoning regulations upon which many residents made their decisions to purchase their homes. Had this development been somewhere like Street Road, that would have been fine, as this is a commercial zone. But this is not the case with the location of the proposed development. Had this Wawa been there, we would not have purchased a house in which we currently live. Lastly, there is simply no need for benefit, or benefit from this Wawa. There is already a small and quiet gas station right nearby, and there is, there is also a small Wawa shop as well, which seems to suit everyone just fine. Building this proposed Wawa is excessive, adds no value to the local residents. Instead, it would simply ruin the quality of life. In summary, this proposal is completely unnecessary, adding no value to the community while bringing with it a great deal of negative and dangerous consequences. It seems borderline, if not completely illegal. No one I have spoken in the, in the area is in favor of this, and such a project can not be allowed to proceed against the desires of those living in the area. Keith Campania, 202 Fairhill Drive, Churchville. I ask the Board of Supervisors to vote against the approval of the Wawa plan. Additional traffic congestion and deterioration of the quality of life of the surrounding neighborhood will be bad for Northampton Township now and for the foreseeable future. Irene Blake, 121 Hope Road. I'm sorry if I didn't say your name correctly. I feel safe in Holland. I feel safe at midnight walking my dog on Hope Road. I've lived here for 20 years and would like it to stay that way. Introduce a 24-hour traffic-producing business and everything changes. Many of the recently reported crimes have occurred at Super Wawas. There were robberies reported in Abington and in Philadelphia, an attempted robbery at Feasterville-Sinoco, and this past weekend there was crime committed at a Wawa in South Philadelphia, and a hit-and-run at the Wawa in New Hope. Drug paraphernalia has been found in the parking lot of the Roosevelt Boulevard's Super Wawa. It's not the Wawa, it's not that Wawa necessarily to blame, but a 24/7 gas station naturally attracts huge volumes of customers, and those huge numbers elevate the incidence of crime. Why give crime a chance? The proposed Holland Super Wawa would be immediately surrounded on two sides by residential homes. The area is not policed at night. It stands to reason, if you introduce people with criminal intent or just loiterers trying to make trouble, who are they putting at risk? Ask yourself, would you feel safe living on? Pardon?
The sound is off.
Can you guys check the sound for the, on the TV? Is it back on?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, thank you. I used to live in peace and quiet in our village. I used to leave my front door open during the day. Board of Supervisors, please don't destroy our charming Holland. Vote no. Lana Blake, 125 Marine Road, Holland. Spilled gasoline is a serious hazard. Leaking fuel tanks and spills at gas stations are notorious for contaminating drinking water. In spite of the arrival of electric cars, proposed Holland Super Wawa is banking on the previous commercial success of the gas station model, which will be bad news for residential and commercial neighbors. While gas station operators claim that underground storage tanks are well-constructed, there is always a risk they will leak, and when they inevitably leak, they will cause serious property damage and personal injury. Drinking water supplies will be contaminated. Odors from gas stations will seep into the residential homes, and tank overfills, though rare, will destroy wildlife. In addition, the inevitable soil and groundwater cleanups to follow will be prolonged and expensive to the township. Personal injury claims and litigation will be expensive to the township. It's so easy to become complacent when you haven't developed a clear why. Why risk the safety and health of your residents? Why risk your family's health? What is your personal why? Your why is the reason you serve on the Board of Supervisors, maybe for your family. This proposed Holland Super Wawa would be immediately surrounded by residential homes, with my sister-in-law and her family residing merely 200 years away, probably 200 feet Or yards, maybe, yeah. And directly exposed to benzene and petroleum products. I urge you to vote no to this risky, irresponsible, and opportunistic Wawa Profco project. Bianca Charnis, 105 Hope Road. John Hopkins Bloomberg School of Public Health article from October 2014 studies, quotes a study that suggests drips of fuel spilled at gas stations, which occur frequently, whether you can see a stain or not, could cumulatively cause long-term environmental damage to soil and groundwater in residential areas located near pumps. The same report stated that the concrete pads under the pumps also can accumulate significant amounts of spilled gas, which will penetrate the concrete and escape the soil. Therefore, this becomes an even greater concern when the residential neighborhood has private wells serving the community, which our Holland neighborhood has. In fact, the majority of homeowners have wells. The number, the numbers in this report about spills are stunning. Even a small station dispenses approximately 100,000 gallons per month, with high-volume stations selling more than 10 times that amount. So that means thousands of opportunities for spills and leaks. And finally, the same study learned of allowing rainwater to flow over the concrete pads beneath the pumps, because the rainwater would pick up spilled gasoline and transport it quickly and efficiently into soils and groundwaters, even without a storm. For all these reasons, I urge you not to allow this project to continue at all. I'll take a break from reading, and up next. Did we find Jeff? I guess we did not. Okay. I think we gave him ample opportunity. Sharon Furlong, and then Tom Bueker. I don't, is Tom here?
He's outside.
Tom, I think if you're outside, come on and make your way in. Sharon, three minutes, okay? Thank you.
That's the second time you've done that. That's the second time you've done that. Sharon Furlong, 133 East Bristol Road, Feasterville-Trivos, spokesperson for Buck's Environmental Action. The underground tanks located at the now-closed gas station are empty. So we must ask, has the ground been tested in order to find out if there are contaminated soils or poisoned groundwater from the decades that gas station operated? We feel compelled to remind this board that a gas station in the Doylestown area had leakage of a gasoline additive called MTBE seeped from the soil to the groundwater, causing a long and expensive cleanup. This was all a mere 21 years ago. Yet even after that mitigation effort, the DEP still had to work with the initial owner, ConocoPhillips, because of other contamination issues that predated this final insult. So what does this mean? That this particular site was contaminated before the year 2000? Would this have ever come to light or be addressed if this MTBE leakage had not occurred, and most importantly, had not been caught? So this leads back to those now-empty underground storage tanks. A quick search of the DEP site concerning violations of this gas station revealed that this station incurred six violations from 1989 through 2015. Records indicate the owner complied with rectifying the situation each time, but it must also be noted that at least four of these six violations occurred in back-to-back years. So what kind of compliance? In addition, please note that the violations were all concerned with either failures to comply with requirements for properly transferring gasoline from storage tanks into cars themselves, including the last violation in 2015, and/or the failure to comply with release-detection requirements. So everyone thinking about the potential know the reality of accumulated spills contaminating this new site if Super Wawa is allowed to be built, and the possibility we might not know about it, since the DEP has far fewer staff than 21 years ago. The soil at this old gas station, of course, has not been tested, and here we are talking about putting another gas station in the same area, just a few acres away, with a whole lot more pumps. This is reckless behavior, risk-taking on a level that we don't believe this community should be subjected to. Is this place already an undeclared brownfield that no one knows about? EPA indicates that there are around 450,000 brownfields in the United States, and possibly one-half of these are thought to be a toxic problem because of leaking underground storage tanks at gas stations. Are you prepared to risk becoming this kind of statistic? Say no to this Super Wawa project. And before I go, I want to let you know there have been studies, and they've been done within five years, in several places of the United States, trying to figure out what is a proper setback for gas stations from homes.
Sharon, finish up.
It is beyond 300 feet.
Thank you very much. Tom, and then John, I'm sorry, I can't read the last name, from 148 Wooden Bridge. Are you in the room? Tom from Wooden Bridge, if you're out in the hall or the other room, please make your way forward. Tom, John M., John M. Hello, name and address for the record, please.
My name is Tom Bueker, 669 Holland Road, Holland, Pennsylvania. Thanks for having me back. I like pictures to help me quickly illustrate the reality of the Wawa mega-gas station and its impact on its community. I want to start by showing this picture of the closed Shell Station, 900 feet south of the proposed Super Wawa. I want to show it for the record, so that I am aware of the fact that the Wawa Provco representatives have seen it and choose to ignore it. Now, I don't know what came first, the chicken or the egg regarding this site, whether it was already closed when Wawa began planning, or maybe it's a result of the threatened competition, I don't know. But the reality today is that there is a closed gas station 900 feet south of and 50 feet lower in elevation than this proposed mega-Wawa on the Wright property. The closed gas station obviously is zoned correctly and does not have to pretend to be a convenience store or require 13 Township ordinance zoning waivers in order to place and shoehorn this in as a cookie-cutter Super Wawa in a place where it's obviously too small. Picture number two. In addition to current Wawa Provco plan and the Holland master plan call for closing the portion of Holland Road that separates the present Wawa store from the gas station, a distance of a little more than 100 feet. So the real estate that is currently Holland Road will be available for development. Connect the gas with the store. There are three empty underground storage tanks waiting, and lots of room to do something good for all of us. The last one, then. I've spoken about the cut-through traffic that it will cause, the traffic light at Roxsville, which you don't show in your pictures, which will stop northbound traffic on Buck Road for the first time ever, and without traffic studies to support it. According to 2012 numbers, 10,000 northbound vehicles per day go up there. I've mentioned the fact that you wrap Holland Road, a state road, 2067, around your gas station and incorporate Roxsville Road as part of this redirected state road. Roxsville Road, which was planned to be closed between Buck and Hope Road in the Holland master plan, as opposed to what you say, now becomes a state road. I've also spoken about the proximity of this gas station to the residential homes across the street and on either side. I want to make a last point tonight regarding the Wright property and from there north. The different elevations of Holland are part of its charm, and important to note, the 50-foot difference in height between the higher proposed site at Roxsville and the lower former Shell current Wawa site in the business district make for a natural separation between the businesses and the residential areas. When you look southward from the Wright property, you cannot see the business district less than 1,000 feet south due to the difference in elevation. That's significant. Now, if you turn around and look north between Holland to Buck Road, as the triangle widens all the way up to Tyler State Park, two miles away, there are no businesses, schools, churches, an old folks home, and a funeral home. It's worth preserving. Please consider the alternate site envisioned by the 2014 master plan, that of the closed Shell Station, the planned closure of Holland Road, and our current Wawa store. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bueker. Was John M.? Did anybody find him? If not, Jill Kerr? Are you here? Is Jill Kerr here? And Mark Gribman from 121 Hope Road after that.
And Mark?
Mark Gribman?
Mark Gribman?
And Mr. Chat, you're in the room, so...
And Jill?
You'll be third. Just giving you a heads up.
Mark?
Okay, Mark, you can go.
I'm Mark Gribman. I live at 121 Hope Road, so I'm a neighbor of the proposed site. I want to talk briefly about corporate greed, but then I first some comments from this group, and I decided to address some what we've heard. I've lived in this house for about 21 years, but I come from Soviet republics, and we're pretty skeptical about this level of bureaucracy. So when I hear "half-truths," that really triggers me. Something about, it was a very simple statement about not being able to predict when the gas would be delivered. I actually work for companies that support clinical trials, and we can easily predict when the drugs have to be outsized for patients to take them. There's predictive modeling, it's very easy technologies available. So this is the kind of "half-truths" that we've heard, but I wanted to remind you that there are probably more that we haven't heard. And where I came from, we were very skeptical when a cohort of Politburo members would talk about a project with no issues, because we know that there are known issues, or maybe unknown issues, that have occurred. So as a board, I want to remind you that there is some, you know, I have to be in the risk management business. There are things that you've heard today about this project that are true, but there are things that have not been said, that this group knows that exist without the vows. So the community is trying to bring that up to bear, and I want to remind you that you are in the risk management, you have to understand that there is more unsaid or untold, that there is an untold story here that will happen to this community if the project will be shoehorned in this neighborhood. So please vote no, understand the circumstances, understand the risks involved. Thank you.
Jill Kerr? Is Jill here?
She had submitted an email.
She signed up on the sheet, so I'm assuming she's here to speak, so I'm not going to read the email if she's here.
Oh, but Jill.
Okay, we'll give her a couple more minutes. The email is way too long, and it would be better if she was here. John M. from Wooden Bridge? Did we find him? No? Okay. Mr. Chat, you're up.
It sounded like there is a significant line.
Okay, I don't mind changing the order around while people come in. It's okay.
Yeah, I'm Charles Chat. I live at 74 Lakeview Drive, Holland, PA, about four blocks from the proposed site. I had a really good location, right over there. I got to see Mr., I wrote your name down, see if I set it phonetically, see if I get it right, Mr. Lubinay. Give a couple smirks over to this young man, and bring in a little...
Can you talk into the microphone? Thank you.
When it was really topical, when some of the things were really topical and very pertinent, a little smirk went over between these individuals that sort of woke them up a little bit, because some of them seemed half asleep, except for the guy from Wawa. Wide awake, he did a good job. I'm a former high school teacher, and I commend you to maybe put your phone away. Most of the time, I had your phone out, and had to wake you up. That's what I wanted to say, because I was in a really great location to see all that. And I tell you, I love Wawa, too, but recently there was something written about the tuna. They put filler in their tuna. So Wawa's not perfect, you know? Just want to tell you that. I have an article about some of the food, and I'm getting away from the mic again. Let me read my little saying here, because something in this presentation I have says it all. It's called a done deal. That's what I think. I am here this evening because I am concerned about the safety and health in my neighborhood and the impact of your decision, if you vote yes, to move ahead on this project. I am a retiree. I'm an old man. You know, I could just say, hey, let the next generation take it. I have a daughter. I'm looking for granddaughter, you know, down the road. I don't want anything like that near my daughter. All the things I've heard, the doctors coming up, saying the fumes, the toxicity, all bad stuff, all bad stuff. And I was real proud of some of these young people, this young lady and this young man back here. I'd be proud, because as a high school teacher, you want the people to be involved and speak up, and they did. Some people weren't happy with what they said. I was, because we have given them voice. And we talked about some of the republics in Russia where maybe they don't have that freedom, and these guys were speaking about the Politburo. That's all so important, because we've given our kids a voice, and we don't want that taken away. There is documentation of up to 30% reduction in property value within the proximity of a super gas station. There are countless articles on the effects of super gas stations and property values and real estate websites such as Zillow and Realtor.com. I consulted with two independent realtors from Holland, brokers in Holland, and they estimated from $50,000 to $100,000 could be lost with your house near a gas station, close proximity to a super gas station. Additionally, the comps will affect similar homes in the immediate area, now and in the future. The Federal Housing Authority published a handbook called Single Family Housing Policy Handbook 4000, which speaks out and outside forces that affect the marketability and the value of a property. It states that the subject's property line, not the house itself, is located within 300 feet of a storage tank with a capacity of 1,000 gallons or flammable explosive materials, the property is going to be subject of higher insurance premiums, and a multitude of other negative things will happen.
Can you try to wrap up?
There will be two tanks holding approximately 22,000 gallons of gasoline and one of 20,000, a total of 64,000 gallons of gasoline and flammable explosive material near these homes 70 feet away. The big thing I want to say, I'm going to skip a lot of this, because I want to say one thing. When you decide to run for supervisor position, you ran on policies that are relevant in our community. You represent the people's wants and needs going forward. Telling the business community at Pheasant Run Shopping Center, because I spoke to them, I spoke to a number of the business owners down there, and you know what they said? A supervisor was in, telling them it was a done deal. Don't get involved. It was a done deal. I heard that from four or five business owners in Pheasant Run. A done deal. It's all right.
I'm going to hit the gavel right there, and I'm going to say for the record, that is untrue. It did not happen. That, it may have been told to you, it did not happen from this board. It did not happen from this board. We are here for the first time to hear this application publicly. No prior decisions from anyone in this board have been made. I don't really care what the gentleman said down there, maybe he believes that. No one here talked to them.
He said it was a supervisor from the board.
No one on this board, no, no one on this board has made a prior decision till tonight.
That is incorrect.
Did not happen. False. Dennis Williams?
Thank you.
Dennis Williams, you're up next. Dennis Williams, we'll give him a second to get here. Jill Kerr signed up on the sheet. I don't think she's here, but there's also an email as well. The email is very long, but there are some subject titles, so that's what I will read. Township Supervisors at Al, this is David and Jill Kerr, 216 Roxsville Road. I strongly urge you to deny the proposed Super Wawa. I cannot fathom the fact that this is even being considered for the Village of Holland. This is not anywhere close to keeping a village feel as proposed in the master plan. There are many commercial areas that are suitable for a mega-gas station, but the residential neighborhood of Holland is not one of them. Just because it may be permissible to build this by current zoning loopholes does not make it right. My wife and I are Holland residents, living approximately one-quarter mile from the proposed site at 216 Roxsville Road. Our concerns are as follows, and it's very long, but I'm just going to read the paragraph titles. Pollution, traffic, existing businesses, loss of village feel. And I'll read the ending paragraph. I think, I believe it adequately relays the thought. Please vote with your conscience, be honest with yourselves, this is a gas superstore, not a convenience store. Vote as if this gas superstore was being built in your backyard or buried as if it was in your front yard, as it is actually the case for several homeowners even closer to the site than mine. Those unfortunate people's home values will be decimated, potentially leaving us all abandoned properties bordering this site. All nearby homeowners will be trapped with lower property values. Please don't vote as a politician, but vote as a resident of the Village of Holland. Going to read a couple more, and then, are you Dennis? Dennis? You'll be up, you'll be up next, if you don't mind. Thanks for your patience. This is Gary Charnes, 105 Hope Road. My name is Gary Charnes. I live at 105 Hope Road. The Holland master plan included the Holland Village overlay plan. It was agreed and signed by most of the present Northampton Supervisors in 2014. In Chapter 3, beginning on page 59 of the HVOP, four scenarios are described, and all four call for vacating or eliminating Roxsville Road between Hope and Buck. Now you are asking for 12 gas pumps. This constitutes a breach of trust between the supervisors and the neighbors. The C2 zoning approved by the HVOP included light commercial businesses. For instance, a professional office building like the one now at 295 Buck Road, a bank, dentist, or doctor's office, notary, attorney's office, bakery, barber, pizza shop, garden, nursery, et cetera. All of those would promote continued commercial development in Holland and would support small business owners, many who live in and pay taxes to Holland. None would be dangerous or inappropriate buttressing residential homes. An example of C2 zoning is the kind of cute restaurants and shops you see in Newtown Borough. The property values in Newtown Borough continue to rise adjacent to the shops. It makes it a desirable place to live there. The super gas station will make Holland ugly and industrial. You see the residents of Holland are not opposed to any commercial development on the land where the Holland Super Wawa is proposed. We just want it to be appropriate to meet our needs and where we continue to feel safe. Please consider our future lifestyle with this monstrosity and do the right thing for This is Lana Charnes. because of the danger it presents to residents and schoolchildren, and the traffic nightmares it will introduce for my neighbors and family. I live on Hope Road. Anyone driving north on Buck Road, unable to make the left turn onto Holland Road because of traffic, will turn left onto Roxville, or take the next left onto Mallard to snake their way back to Holland Road. These streets have 25 miles per hour speed limits. Will impatient drivers coming from the super Wawa really honor these speed limits? Holland Elementary is at Beverly and Crescent. There are Council Rock, school bus stops at Mallard and East Heron and Hope and Roxville. Our children will be standing on these corners and others as they walk on the neighborhood streets. Most have no sidewalks. How does super Wawa ensure our children's safety? I am also extremely concerned that super Wawa fuel trucks will be using Holland Road and Buck Roads to deliver fuel, most likely at night when visibility is poor. These roads are dark, hilly, and winding. You are introducing fuel trucks to residential neighborhoods. A few days ago, we had treacherous fog. There have been fatal car accidents on Buck Road and Holland Road. Cars have hit trees or overturned. If a tanker loses control and overturns, we will have a massive fuel spill. If the fuel ignites, nothing will stop the ensuing fire. Holland Road near the super Wawa site is bordered by trees, grass, and cornstalks. A fuel fire will engulf area homes in minutes. It's unconscionable that you would permit a super Wawa at this site, knowing the dangers to our schoolchildren and dangers of fuel trucks. Please vote against this insane project. To whom it may concern, this is Matt Scanapeco. I'm sorry if I didn't do that well. Scanapeco? Thank you. And same address?
Four Molyneux. 23 Hillcroft Road.
23?
Hillcroft.
Hillcroft Road. Okay. There's no address on here. I'll read it. Oh, it's in the paragraph, I'm sorry. My name is Matt Scanapeco. I currently reside at 23 Hillcroft Road, Feasterville. I'm a longtime resident of Hope Road who recently moved a mile down the road. My family still resides in the street, and I frequently travel through that area. I'm also a local real estate agent, and I would like to comment on the potential impacts to housing values in the surrounding area. The pollution, lighting noise, and traffic from the proposed super Wawa will have a negative ripple effect on home values, not only on Hope Road but other surrounding homes. People move to residential areas like Holland and pay a premium to live there to get away from the commercial presence seen in other surrounding locations. The home values in the immediate vicinity of the Wawa will decline due to the unwanted features of the new surroundings as mentioned above. As these houses eventually sell for less, the other sellers in the neighborhood will then lose, will be then losing value due to the most recent comparable home selling for less. This will ultimately impact the entire street values, not only due to proximity, but the travel impacts this development would cause. I personally oppose the plans of Wawa to be built in this location and prefer something more beneficial to the community to be developed on this parcel. Peter and Terry Sikora, 478 Roxville Road. I've been a resident of Holland for 35 years. I live on Roxville Road. There have been issues with speeding, and the building of super Wawa will only compound the problem. We don't need the added light pollution, noise pollution, or added traffic. It will negatively affect the residences and small businesses in Holland. There is no need for super Wawa, as there are two on Street Road and one in Richborough. You can't control the speed on Roxville Road. How are you going to control the traffic at the Wawa surrounding area? Let's beautify Holland by raising the Mill Race, Breezy Point, Sesspool, and plant some tulips. Say no to super Wawa. Dennis, you've been patient. Let's go to you first. Thank you.
Thank you. It's Dennis Williams, 16 North Marmick. I'm actually about to, you know, celebrate an anniversary. 20 years ago this month, my family moved up to Holland, and we fell in love with it instantly. And actually, it's ironic when I sit in the overflow room staring at this logo. This is the logo why I fell in love with this township. The scenic, the scenic environment, that logo is so opposite of what we're discussing today. You know, so I, you know, like, I raised my family here, but I heard a lot tonight about technical matters. It's a technical matter. The light pollution, the noise pollution, the traffic, the actual pollution. What was discussed here about benzene, I've spent two decades of my life developing drugs for cancer. This is a real thing. The evidence that this has a cancer risk is unequivocal. I mean, I could show you 20 publications tomorrow. This is unequivocal, that evidence. It's not refutable. And I just think, you took it, all these matters together, as me, as a resident of this township, these are not technical matters. These are huge quality of life matters. The blight of what will happen to the surrounding businesses is not a technical matter. I mean, it's unconscionable what we're actually being discussed here tonight. Like, this, there's no way this should go forward. And I really look forward to everybody on this board to support the community here to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Joan Chat, and then Valadimir Romanik will be up after Mrs. Chat.
Hi.
Your name and address? Thank you. Joan, name and address for the record.
Oh, I'm going to give it to you. Hi, I'm Joan Chat. I live at 74 Lakeview Drive, Holland, PA, 18966. My husband and I have lived at 74 Lakeview Drive for 36 years. We were both educators and are now retired. I chose this home as my forever home to raise my family. I was attracted to the village and the village of Holland. The village-style atmosphere, the mom-and-pop shops, local businesses, local medical services. Until this recent issue, the proposal to build a 24/7 super Wawa by a billion-dollar corporation on a virgin green property less than a tenth of a mile from my home. I had always felt that the township was working in the best interests of citizens, in my family's best interest. A number of years ago, as my well water was consistently coming back as undrinkable due to bacteria, I implored the municipal authority to bring public water down Lakeview Drive. I had a problem, and the township listened. They did not want my baby daughter to have to be bathed in bacteria-laden well water. My thought was the township cared about me, my family, our health and safety. In another instance, a lot at the corner in Buck and Roxville Road with a dilapidated house on it went up for sale. While several proposals were brought before the Board of Supervisors, they listened to the neighbors surrounding the property, denying several commercial proposals and cluster housing beyond what would fit on that land. No exceptions or conditions were granted. I'm happy to point out that the Board of Supervisors at that time made decisions that protected our neighborhood. I'm no longer that young mom, that young wife. My husband said he's old. I'm not. I'm a little younger, but what the heck. I'm a seasoned citizen, and I'm again coming before the Board of Supervisors pleading for you to do what is right, not necessarily what can be done, but is right for the safety and integrity of our neighborhood. I'm holding a document, which I've shown you before, the Holland Village Master Plan, dated May 2014. Eileen Silver, Barry Moore, Kimberly Rose, your names are on this document, along with the names of Robert Pellegrino and Michael Solomon. This master plan is still the master plan on the township website. My husband and I, along with our neighbors, attended the meeting in December of 2012, which was the basis for this report. Some of you were at this meeting. Have you heard the phrase, "My word is my bond"? You can find that phrase throughout history, in the Bible, Old and New Testament, on the London Stock Exchange, dictum meum pectum, in famous speeches referring to women and men of honesty and integrity. Rhetorically, I would like to answer you to answer this question. Is your word your bond? This document is the written word. Your names are on it. Is your word your bond? Here is the plan the township has adopted, the one you agreed to. It specifically states about the Wright property, quote, "The upper portion could be developed as a park which would act as a transitional area from the current residential development. The tract below could be developed as residential units or low-rise commercial, keeping with the village-style development with parking behind the units, businesses with local ties, townhouses with park, low-rise office commercial, or village-style commercial and residential."
Try to wrap up, please.
I will. Nowhere is super gas station or convenience store with 24/7 super gas station in the plan. Nowhere. The plan you agreed to, the plan that has your name on it, your word. Is your word your bond? I'm not against Wawa. Provco does what Provco does, and Mr. Lubinay will heartlessly represent Provco. He's not representing us, the citizens of Northampton Township, who are fighting for the safety and quality of life of our families. I'm beseeching you, our supervisors, the ones who are here to represent us, to honor your word.
Thank you. Oh, thank you. Sorry, I didn't see you. And your name and address for the record.
Vladimir Romanuk, 147 Hope, Holland.
Thank you.
I'm probably the luckiest man in this room, because super Wawa planned to, super Wawa 16 gas pumps planned to be 70 feet from my home. Really, guys? We bought our house in hope to expand from noisy Philadelphia to nice, clean, and quiet place. And it is true, our community is nice, nice place to live. But right now is a big question, big question, because somebody from this room wants to turn out, wants to, wants to turn everything upside down, and those people are sitting here. And you will repay about $10,000 for property taxes. Anyone, I want to ask you, for what? For 16, for 16 gas pumps next to my door? For 24 hours of noisy cars and trucks? For exhaust fumes, heavy smell, heavy smell of gasoline, trash, rats, mice, and messy traffic 24 hours, seven days a week? You want to build another disaster place next to residential area? We already have them. We have them. This is National, National Minic River, with poisoned water, poisoned fish, and nobody cares about it. Or this is not enough for you? I just want, I would like to read a couple sentences from speech of President of the United States of America on the Global Climate Summit. He said, "I want to build a critical infrastructure to produce and deploy clean technology, both those we can harness today and those that will invent tomorrow. The United States is waiting. We are resolving to take action, not only the federal government, but our states, our cities, our small communities, all across the country. I see line workers laying, laying thousands of miles of transmission lines for clean, modern, and resilient grid. I see automakers build the next generation electrical vehicles, and electricians installing nationwide 500,000 charging stations along our highways. Maybe Wawa is going to go to highways, not in our area. Time is short, but I believe we can do this. We really have no choice. We have to get this done." That's what President of the United States said. And finally, I want to ask you, guys, don't let this monster Wawa destroy our community and kill everything. Thank you.
So that's the last of the sign-up folks. Are there more? Are there another sheet? No? Thank you. I didn't have it. Dear Supervisors, this is from Robert and Claire Castleberry, 295 Roxville Road. We are pleased, to those of us, we are very concerned about the subject development plan and its apparent disregard of the existing Holland Village master plan that the township had developed and published for the use of the subject property. Locating a super Wawa at this location appears to be both a total disregard for the plan and historic village and residential character of the area. The existing commercial development across Buck Road from the subject property both aesthetically fits with the style of the area and has not brought nearly the traffic to the small roads of the area that the proposed development will undoubtedly cause. It is also hard to understand why another Wawa is needed at this location, since there are two in Feasterville, with the closest only two miles away at Bustleton Pike and Street Road, and the other 2.3 miles away. We also have a super Wawa here in our township that is 4.4 miles away. My wife and I have resided on Roxville Road for 27 years and one of the historic house, and own one of the historic houses on this road. It is our opinion that the proposed development is a terrible idea. We strongly believe that the proposed development will result in a loss in property value and quality of life for ourselves and those who live in the residential neighborhoods surrounding the development. As taxpayers in this township, we expect our township supervisors to act in accordance with the wishes of the majority of the affected residents versus that of a single developer. We are submitting these comments even though the meeting had been canceled. We are doing this so that you have your comments on the similar matter in the event we are not available on the date the meeting is rescheduled, which we did honor. That's why we continue to read some of the comments from the canceled dates. Can I see the list? Oh, thanks. Next up will be Ilja Brennan, and then Ermek. I'm sorry, I can't read the last name. Ilja is 290 Mallard or Holland, and then Ermek from 300 Holland. Just going to read a couple more, and then I'll get to you. So you can just take a break for a second. This is, oh my, I don't know who this is. Brandon Anapoloski of 189 Monroe Court. I'm a resident of Northampton Township and appalled that the Board of Supervisors is even considering a proposal which has such obvious flaws and consequences for their constituents. I chose to speak out tonight because I cannot sit back and let this proposal move forward without making my concerns known, but I think it's clearly evident at this point what the concerns are should, what the concerns are should this project proceed. What I really want to talk about is Northampton Township's integrity, or better yet, lack thereof. Integrity consists of one thing above all, honesty. Honesty to your citizens like me who will be negatively impacted by the disastrous proposal. Honesty to your fellow township officials about why this project cannot proceed in its current form, and most importantly, honest to yourselves about what will really happen should you vote to approve this. People of this township will not sit back and stand idly by while you willingly destroy one of the last open green spaces that exists in Holland. We will hold whoever votes to approve this eyesore accountable forever. How will we do that? Well, I will tell you how. Every last person who signed the Stop Wawa petition, all 2,750, will systematically be informed of your miscalculation and advised to never support you again. Every person is able will actively work to expose your lack of credibility and caring for your residents. Most of all, we will make it crystal clear that every future problem associated with Wawa and the Wright property is directly on your shoulders of responsibility. Do not overthink this. Vote no and save the integrity that you value so much, because if you don't, that integrity is as good as gone. SC Cherkin, 51 Netherlands Drive. As a resident of Holland since 1979, I'm aware of many developments, most of which have not damaged the surrounding areas. We've lost farms, and we've, we lost the farms we used to get fresh corn from, but schools have replaced them. We enjoy having Wawa stores in our area. They are convenient and provide service to the neighborhood. The plan for Wawa to bring a large gasoline station to the locations specified creates traffic problems and other problematic issues, late-night businesses, lights, noise, and possible fumes. As far as I know, only main roads have become Wawa gas stations. Neither Buck Road nor Holland Road can be considered main roads. Please do not approve this plan. John Lutz, 210 Forest Drive. As a 40-year resident of Holland, I urge you not to destroy our village and vote no for the Wawa application to build a new store and gas station. The Holland master plan kept the area as green space to separate the residential area from the village business area. Please keep it that way. Thank you. Eric Lehman, 57 Schoolhouse Road. Hi, Adam. I was watching something from 1982 when Joan Rivers wanted to come to Northampton Township. The five of you should really watch this video. They rejected her because of zoning and all she wanted to do. Fred was on the Board of Supervisors back then and said her project would bring unwanted traffic to Northampton Township. This should be the way. This should be the way you people think, but I know you already have made up your mind. That is not the case. Bruce Townsend even talked about his views on why this subject, why this project wouldn't work. Please watch this if you get the chance to. Joan even wanted to bring in sewage and make it her own township over there. Traffic is no different today than back in 1982, other than more cars and traffic lights. I thought I would bring this to your attention. The neighbors back then rejected Joan Rivers. The neighbors in Holland are rejecting Super Wawa. Please, people that live there should be taken into consideration. This is my concern. I hope you like my information. My brother lives in that neighborhood also. Sincerely, Eric Lehman. Robert and Claire Castleberry, 295 Roxsville Road. Dear Supervisors, we are very concerned about the subject development plan and its apparent disregard of the existing Holland Village master plan the township had developed and published for the use of the subject property. Locating a Super Wawa at this location appears to be both a total disregard for the plan and the historic village and residential character of the area. The existing commercial development across Buck Road from the subject property both aesthetically fits with the style of the area, has not brought nearly the traffic to the small, has not brought nearly the traffic to the small roads of the area that the proposed development will undoubtedly cause. Did I read this already? Is this a repeat? I think it is. I think it's a duplicate. Sounds familiar. Yeah, it's a duplicate. Dave Scanapico, 75 Hope Road, Holland. I want to remind you that while the Constitution guarantees the right of individual ownership of real estate, it does not guarantee the uncontrolled sale use and development of real estate. That is why we have a planning commissions, zoning boards that make recommendations to you, the Board of Supervisors, on land use with core principles being preservation of property values, promotion of the highest and best use, balance between individual property rights and the public good, incorporation of community consensus into the regulatory and planning activities. As a real estate broker, investment more than 35 years' experience, I can tell you unequivocally neighboring property values will suffer if this plan goes through. The Board of Supervisors, in conjunction with the Planning Board, adopted a comprehensive master plan for Holland and as part of that plan has a duty and obligation to work with the zoning board to ensure the towning zoning ordinances are consistent with the master plan to provide a mechanism so the desired goals can be reached. Clearly, this has not happened, as this is a direct conflict with all the core purposes of land use control. There isn't an individual with an ounce of common sense that could argue otherwise, which is why the Planning Commission has unanimously voted against it. Can you affirm you are doing everything within your power to promote and achieve the core purpose of land use here? And what about future applications? What are you doing now to protect your residents going forward? The listing agent adjacent to the proposed gas station told me they lowered the listing price because of the feedback from buyers about the proposed Wawa, so it has affected the value. I urge you to stand with the Planning Commission and do the right thing. Say no to Wawa. I'm gonna read it. One more and then I'll go back to the list. This is Chris and Lynn Holzner, 148 East Rambler Drive. Super Wawa does not belong in a residential neighborhood in Holland, period. It's entirely inappropriate. The township should not permit this project to go forward and should not grant any variances regarding size, hours of operation, number of gas pumps, roads, access, lighting, signage, et cetera. This is the wrong location. Traffic in Holland, in the area of Buck Road, Holland Road and Roxsville Road can be very bad. A Super Wawa will only exacerbate this. Why is this even being considered? What will happen to the Holland master plan the township has been developing? Is all that going to be thrown out? Wawa needs to find another location. Thank you. So Ilya, you're up. Thank you. And then Ermik is next. And then Suzanne Claus from Ronald Drive. I don't know if you're in the room. Suzanne, if you're not in the room, make your way forward. Thank you. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Ilya Bremen, 290 Holland Road. I'm probably the third luckiest person here. Vladimir is number one. Mohan Ranadi, whom Mr. Van Louvenay probably knows really well already from the case in the Court of Common Pleas, is the third one. So you got, you guys luck, you got lucky too, because you got a bunch of immigrants fighting you here. The decision to grant, this, this should have been a conditional use hearing, but hopefully, you know, it will happen at some point in the future. But the decision today to grant or not to grant the requested 13 waivers is, will have to consider the following. The Board of Supervisors may modify or waive such mandatory provisions so substantial justice may be done and the public interest secured provided that such modifications or waiver will not have the effect of nullifying the intent or purpose of this chapter. So what is the intent of this chapter 22? It is to promote, protect, and facilitate one or more of the following: the public health, safety, morals, general welfare, coordinating and practical community development, so on, so forth; to prevent one or more of the following overcrowding of land, blight, danger, congestion, and travel and transportation, the loss of life, health or property from fire, panic, or other dangers. I don't see the operational model of Wawa or Profco's hurdle rate on this list. The chapter actually even says that it is adopted to promote an orderly plan of development in accordance with the Northampton Township Comprehensive Plan. And anyone who has seen the Northampton Township Comprehensive Plan knows that this entire gas station project doesn't do that. Chapter 22 also mentions the requirement to comply with chapter 27 zoning, which I'd like to remind everyone defines the intent of commercial districts as follows: to protect nearby residential areas from noise, glare, odor, or any other obnoxious condition like benzene fumes, crime, and stuff like that, which might result from commercial-oriented uses. Chapter 22 also makes it very clear what the intent of buffer requirements are. To provide design solutions, we solve all visual and noise problems from recreational, industrial, commercial, or motor vehicle users, whether on the same lot or not. And as Mr. Cohen indicated in his written testimony, which hopefully you've all read, most of these waivers requested reduce public safety and general welfare. I also wanted to mention several waivers specifically because they all have one common theme. The applicant proposes 40% less landscaping than required by the ordinance to accommodate more parking. They propose to plant fewer replacement trees and offer to pay a fee because the site area is too small. These waivers, if granted, clearly nullify the intent of the chapter, which is to solve all visual and noise problems. They actually did not, I'm sorry, can I?
You finish up your thought.
Thanks, I appreciate it. There was, there was no vantage point of my house on Holland Road and as you probably might have seen, as you probably might have seen, some of the landscaping solutions were created at the expense of my house and other people on Holland Road. And they also want to, they want maximum headwater depth to be less than required because, well, you guessed it, the parcel doesn't have enough room. The applicant says they accounted for the 100-year event scenario, and this one is really shocking, because we are living through a once-in-a-hundred-year pandemic and 100-year and 500-year floods are happening much more often than statistically expected. Five year in a row in the Houston area and just recently in our own backyard here. You know, you want to make money quickly, but you can't gamble with other people's lives. As we can see, the requested waivers clearly demonstrate that the site is not suitable for this project. It's too green, it's too small, it's too close to people's homes. Please reject the waivers as they're not in the public interest, they nullify the intent of chapter 22, chapter 27, and the Comprehensive Plan. Please tell the developer and its prospective tenant to respect our laws and our community's safety and general welfare. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to take a?
Oh my God, what I have to say is really not that bit. We're in the room. I'm Suzanne.
You are Suzanne. Is Ermik here?
You know what? She just had a little, she had her little girl with her, so she probably laughed.
Oh, yeah.
Like, really. You know, she was like, tiny, tiny.
So Suzanne, this is your call. If you would like to make your statement now, it's fine, or if you'd like to wait for Dr. Rose to come back, if you feel like you need to have everybody here. She just needed to take a.
You know what? I don't really have a speech prepared. My name is Suzanne Claus. I live at 24 Ronald Drive. Our family has owned that house since 1972. It's my family, it's my husband's home and we, he just was hell-bent on living there after he left and got married and we ended up moving back there. But you said at the beginning, like, if we had any questions, we could ask them of you.
Yeah, sure. Just ask the question to me. We'll, we'll take it down and we'll probably answer a little later.
So like, my first question is like, yourself, do you really want, would you want a Super Wawa 70 feet from where you live? Like, I'm just asking.
You will definitely hear from me on that tonight.
Okay, okay. And then my other point with, although she's not here, is when she said, when this vote goes through, and said that to me, sounded like the decision was made. And it was very like, it just made me so angry that I was just like, well then, why, like, yeah, like, you're not even like, listening to what we have to say and we're fighting tooth and nail for where we live. And I'm sure if the tables were turned, these gentlemen here, I know they work for companies, would be the same way. And I mean, I hate to say like, CJ, you said that the structure for the trash is purely sound. I worked in restaurants and they had trash buildings and trust me, there were rats. We named them, one was named Chauncey. You know, and I don't think that there's a foolproof way to eliminate like that. And I don't think anybody wants that in their neighborhood. And I grew up in Delaware County and I think we had the second Wawa. We had a Wawa in 1972. And I lived on a street that was, I didn't have a back neighbor, we had a back street. And everybody would walk up the street and every Saturday I had to clean all the trash that was dumped. By the time they got to my house, they were done their bag of chips, they were done their soda, and they dropped it right on our backyard. Then the other thing I have to say is there was a meeting in, like, I think Glasgow, Scotland these past few weeks, that was talking about reducing everybody's carbon footprint. So I just don't see where having 16 tanks for gas is going to lead us when in 2030 they want to reduce it by 50%. By 2050, they want to reduce it by 100%. Like, it's, it's not where, it's like, almost defunct. It's already obsolete, is what it sounds like to me, like, what we're proposing. And I also feel that the generation behind us is very environmentally active. And I feel, I feel in my own generation that we've just like, done nothing positive. Like, all the plastic water bottles, all that, I, there's so much plastic in this world that it drives me, it makes me sick. And I know that I was part of that problem. And then, I guess the other thing I wanted to say was that I know this is a very, we're at this crossroads and I don't know how we got here. I don't know anything about the zoning guy, or how he decided that he thought this would be a great idea. But it's gonna take a lot of carriage from the six of you to come up with the decision that's best for your community. And we are the ones who put you in this seat. So I can only hope and pray that you'll keep us in mind.
Thank you for your comment. But before you, before you go, because you did have a specific question toward Dr. Rose, I'm sure she'll want to answer it later. But would you just repeat what you said earlier so that she could hear, because she wasn't in the room?
Okay, I just kind of felt when you said like, when this decision, or when the, what was it? Now I forgot.
When the move.
When this, when this vote goes through. And like, just the way that you worded it just made, I think, everyone sitting here feel like the decision has been made. And I know that you're.
We'll all comment later. You'll get my comments for your question from me later, too.
But like, it's all a case of semantics and I just kind of feel like, it's all getting lost.
No, I understand. I just thought it was fair to Dr. Rose, because you mentioned her while she wasn't in the room, to just repeat what you said.
It was early when you were speaking, you're like, when this vote goes through. And I was just like, oh my God, it sounds like the decision has been made. And I understand it can go both ways. I truly do. But just.
When I said a vote, we are gonna make a vote today. I didn't say how it was gonna go.
I know, I know. It's just, you know, like, it's all a case of semantics, but like, I'm sure when, I, I felt that's what it meant. And I'm sure pretty much everybody else.
No.
Thank you. No, thank you.
Okay, sorry. I'll shut up now.
No, no, thank you for, for bringing it up. I, I did want you to repeat it again. Tom, Tom Durkitts, and then Joanne McGovern. Tom Durkitts and Joanne McGovern?
I'm here. I'm down there. I'm here.
Okay. Are you both gonna speak?
Yes.
Okay.
I will behave. I know this is a little crazy in the.
It's okay. No, it's okay. Would you like to go first?
I will.
Okay. You're up. He can catch up to you.
Well, public speaking is not my thing, so I'm very nervous.
Thank you for your time.
Joanne McGovern, 345 Buck Road. I live at the intersection of Roxsville and Buck. And it's been three or four years that I, since I've made a left out of my driveway onto Buck Road. So I go around, so I'm one of those people driving through other, I go to Lakeview or Twist or over to Mallard wherever I can, cutting through other people's property. I don't like doing that, but I'm respectful. I drive slowly. So I know what's coming. So am I gonna have to stop driving, you know, to leave my house? Because the traffic's gonna be all diverted onto Buck Road. So then, also, we have a well. Learned a lot tonight, so that's a concern. And recently, there's been stop signs put up, you know, not stop signs, but signs for 25 miles per hour. That's a joke. They wasted money putting those signs up. So here's what I would like to say to the Profco lawyers. Would you want your families, your spouses, and your children, and your grandchildren to come up against something like this? Would you? I'm sure you're making a lot of money, but find a different cause, because you're being And to the supervisors, I'm so disappointed. I don't know all of your views, but my point is be moral and be ethical and do the right thing for my community. I've lived here for 35 years and I don't want to move away. I'm too old. I'm too old. Just give it some thought, other than your personal interests. I'm sorry, you're sleeping over there. Wake up. This is terrible.
It is.
Yes, it is.
That's all I have to say.
My name is Tom Durkitts. I live at 345 Buck Road in Holland. That's two doors from Roxsville Road. I've lived in Bucks County my whole life. And because of that, and in Holland, with my wife Joanne for 35 years. I can remember when Street Road was a two-lane back, a blacktop from the river to 611. What is it now? It's a four-lane or five-lane highway. And there's, I think, at least three Wawas now on Street Road, maybe, maybe more, I don't know. But I don't know whether there's one down in Ben Salem. I'd like to use the word precedent. Putting this Wawa in this location sets a precedent. It means that the next Wawa might go at a rezoned area of, say, the Holland Elementary School area. Or the Village Shires. Yeah, I would like to speak to those people up there. They, you don't think it can't happen there. Wawa's plan shows that they, every two or so miles, want another gas station. They're being sued in other townships and other states for this same reason. So if you want to set the precedent and turn Buck Road into Street Road, then go along with these people. I'm another one who, I don't have any problem with Wawa as a convenience store, but as a gas station driven by the greed of big oil, I refuse to support them. You vote for this, you vote against yourselves, you go, vote against the community, and I vote against Wawa.
Up next is, I'm not sure of, I can't really read the, the writing. 16 Hope Road, Sherant? I'm sorry. Very difficult.
Shrikan.
Shrikan? Yes, thank you. Shrikan, 16 Hope Road. And then Mike. Shrikanth, 16 Hope Road, and then Mike Torrell?
Turente.
Turente, thank you. At 502 Buck Road. And while they're getting together. My name is Ernik, boy, oh boy, Nusha Live, the owner of 300 Holland Road. I'm speaking against refining the above property into commercial, especially huge retail as Wawa. I own a residential house right across the street, and planning to bring my family to live in it soon. It will be unsafe, loud traffic, garbage to live around. Please do not approve the new development. And thank you. And I'm sorry on the pronunciation of names, difficult for me. This is Jay Bowen, President of the Northampton Preserve Homeowners Association on Hope Road. Good evening, Township Supervisors, I know you're all very busy and must read and review every email for tonight's public comment. Let me be brief. As a grandfather, father, husband, active law enforcement police officer, supervisor for almost 25 years, and president of the Northampton Preserve Homeowners Association, Hope Road. I think we have a little printing problem. The area will attract, this area will attract so much crime, traffic, EPA concerns, pollution, and increase in nuisance violations that are simply just not worth it. Please do not bring this to our beautiful neighborhood. This has all been backed with factual information numerous times by numerous local, loyal neighborhood residents. Please look deep inside your hearts and vote no to Wawa this evening for this location, and move toward the other suitable projects for that space. Thank you in advance for your time, and look forward to your response, as I know you will all make the correct decision. There's a couple duplicates. Kim Sweeney, 462 Buck Road. I would like Wawa to consider its wants and needs and how that decision has direct effect on our neighborhood. In my opinion, Wawa wants a super Wawa in Holland, but doesn't need it. I implore Wawa to reconsider its application, build the super Wawa as described, to reconsider its application to build the super Wawa as described in their application. I emphatically ask Wawa to continue operation in its current space, and utilize the vacated shell property for its gas services. I'm asking Wawa to consider an outside-of-the-box plan that gives Wawa what it wants, and considers the integrity of our village. I'm asking the Board of Supervisors to deny the current application and stand behind our community. Please consider the local environment and waterways. Please consider our safety. The current road design will be a death trap on a blind hill. My children drive here. While I appreciate the speed limit change, it must be extended to Heron Road. More than a dozen times since the speed limit change, I have had people pass me illegally, going 60 miles per hour, many on the blind hill, pardon me, going south. There is no reason that the speed limit change cannot be extended to Heron Road. Board of Supervisors, you promised us a village overlay project many years ago. You must do what you promised and what we have been waiting for. And a new Wawa has never been in the plan. Do what's right, because you know that a super Wawa is wrong in every way. We have been waiting a long time for you to do what has been promised between the mill race, between the mill race, Breezy Point Pool, and overlay project. We have been patient enough, it's time to stand up for that part of the community. Thanks, and it was Kim Sweeney, 462 Buck Road. Hmm. I think I did a couple of these, I think there's a couple duplicates. Yeah. All right, let's get back to our list. Should, should, I'm sorry.
I'll say.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
I'm Shrikanth Kelk.
Shrikanth, thank you, hello.
Hello. I reside at 16 Hope Road.
Thank you.
With my wife, and we raise two children here, they're Councilor students. We have been living here for more than 20 years, so we really like it here. A lot has been said, a lot of people have said, since I'm coming late. I'm not going to repeat the same points, but really going to the zoning part, and the section 27 says, particularly 27 102 says, relationship to the comprehensive plan. The chapter is adapted to promote an orderly plan of development according to the Township's comprehensive plan, including data on existing conditions, statement concerning the proposed plan, evaluation of implementation, techniques, and with reasonable consideration, among other things, of existing character of various areas within it. Also, respective suitability and particular land use. Clearly, the super Wawa does not need that, because the Township Planning Commission has clearly said what needs to be there. Second thing, 27 103 says the interpretation, it says, "The provision thereof shall be held to be minimum requirement for promotion of public health, safety, and general welfare." Now, wherever the provision of this chapter impose greater restriction than those, any other ordinance or regulation, this chapter shall be controlling, whereas the provision of any other statute, other ordinance, that will be regulation. So clearly, the plan which Planning Team had, that clearly raised the restriction that there cannot be something like super Wawa, which will be detrimental to public health. Secondly, the accessory use just cannot be by broadly, because merchant is doing the business the same way everywhere else. It is you who have to decide. It is not something which somebody is doing business elsewhere. Secondly, if you go, I'll again read the part, bear with me, I'm not going to repeat what people have said, the use by right. It says the retail store, and it gives a lot of items, like baked goods, goods, beverage, furniture, floor, products. It nowhere says the gasoline. So if you really have to go by strictly by what is stated in the ordinance, there is no gasoline by right. So really stick to it, nobody has a right to build or sell a gasoline there. So one, you have to be really very clear. Not what Provoco lawyers says, what is, has been written, that you cannot have a gasoline station as C2 zone, period. It's very good, a member who had some business interest, I mean, it was brought today, has refused today, but if you really go to the Township website, that person was in charge of the zoning. So in my view, the violation and conflict has already happened. And I would urge you to recede the decision of the zoning board, because it was taken in violation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, could you react to that?
Yeah, I was just, yes.
Thank you.
What you saw on the website, what you see is the liaisons to the boards, they have no say over those boards, they merely are a conduit to report what happens at those meetings at the Board of Supervisors. We each have an area that we look after strictly for reporting, there's no conflict. Thank you. So, right now, we're going to take a two-minute stand-up stretch, because I do need to take a break, so why doesn't everybody just take a two minutes, and then we'll get right back to it?
Just get organized, we'll get started in about 10 seconds or so. Everybody take their seats. Okay, thanks everybody, I think a little stretch was good. So, we have one, two, three, four, about six more folks sign up to speak. And then I have a half a dozen or so emails and then we'll move the meeting along. Thanks for your patience. I think it's very important that when people wrote in that we hear what they had to say. So, I wanted to read each and every one of them, they deserve to be heard. And because of this crazy situation, we wanted to make it accessible for them. So, we'll keep at it and you're Mike, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you're up and your name and address for the record, please.
Michael Torrente, 502 Buck Road. And you know this is important because you got me up past my bedtime here, so. I just want to start off, I'm a Northeast Philly evacuee within the past year. The dump of Northeast Philly is actually called. So, yeah, me and my wife, you know, we put together a plan. Holland was the best plan for our kid, for our school district, and for a quiet peaceful life. I'm terrified that this plan will go through and you will ruin my dream of living a quiet peaceful life in Holland that I fought so hard for to get here. Forty-two years of fighting hard to get in this position and you guys in one fell swoop can take it away from all of us, all of us here. We've come from mostly Northeast Philly and fought our way to get to a better spot. The Wawa people do not care about our families, our kids, that's your job up here. So, we the people have now stood up and we told you how we feel, now it's your turn to stand with we the people, not we the Wawa because they don't care about us. You should, as our elected leaders, should care about how we feel and what goes in our neighborhood. They don't, they won't. I can tell you, every last one of you sitting there do not want something like this down at the end of your house because it's treacherous to your family, your kids, and everything that you fought for. So, what you guys should really do is pack your stuff up and beat it, that's what should really happen. But I'm sure it won't because you guys just want to coat your pockets more and more and the fighting blue collar people like us get screwed constantly, constantly we get screwed and I'm tired of it. So, everybody, take the rest of time, stand up for everybody, clap your hands, for everybody that stood up and talked tonight and especially for the Duffys that fought so hard for us, you know, leading the way, leading the charge, thank you so much, we appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Wawa go elsewhere.
We're trying to keep people seated in the room, so either sit, find a seat in here if you can. You guys, can you hear me back there? Can you guys either find a seat in here or go ahead out? Thank you. Up next is Christine Richardson and then somebody long on tree, from tree line. Christine Richardson, I did see her, so maybe she can come in. And Long.
Christine.
And then Karen Corelli.
Nina.
Nina, Nina, sorry, I can't read the writing, it's very difficult. Christine, you're up, thank you. Your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name, my name is Christine Richardson, I live at 64 West Rambler Drive in Holland, just over a half mile from the proposed site for the Super Wawa. Before I begin with my comment, I just want to raise a point of order, just for clarification, with supervisor more recusing himself, I'm just unclear what would happen moving forward if there was a split vote. I don't know how, if it was like a two-two vote, I just don't understand then what would happen next. So, that was just a point of order. Okay, with all due respect, the applicant does not care about the community of Holland. If they did, they would hear this intense opposition of trying to squeeze a Super Wawa into a plot of land that is essentially in the middle of a neighborhood, just doesn't belong there. But I do want to thank the applicant for the detailed graphics because it became glaringly obvious that this monstrosity of a business does not belong on that size property. In fact, I don't know that I've ever seen a Super Wawa built on a property or piece of land that resembles the right property. It's very clear that their sole interest is profit, they've demonstrated no concern for our Holland neighbors, corporate greed simply has no place in Holland. I listened to many variance requests for the convenience of the customers, it's not lost on us that catering to their customers translates to money in their pockets. And I'll say it again, that corporate greed has no place in Holland. I heard nothing in their plans to make this oversized business community friendly, in fact, some of their vague responses scream of profit-driven decisions, they failed to demonstrate any concern for our Holland neighbors, and I'm going to say it again, corporate greed has, corporate greed has no place in Holland. Please don't mistake the actions and words from the residents tonight as anything other than pure passion for what's best for Holland. The energy fight and dedication of this group is quite admirable and they're simply driven by protecting the health and safety of our neighbors. However, I'm going to say something that may be perceived as a little unpopular, but I think it's important to be said, that I completely disagree with any statements that suggest that any of these supervisors don't care about their constituents. Based on my personal experience, I know that you are a group of professionals that take your jobs very seriously, the fact that you've listened very intensely to every single comment tonight proves that. Your actions speak louder than some of these words. So, I do appreciate the difficult position that you're in, but I do hope your decision tonight is community-driven for the sake of my neighbors and for the preservation of the beauty and the charm of Holland. Thank you for your time.
Nina, Nina Long, and then after Nina Long is Karen Corelli. Nina Long, Karen Corelli, then Joe Berkhimer, and then Reggie Thomas, they're the last of them. So, Nina Long, then Karen Corelli, then Joe Berkhimer, then Reggie Thomas, they should all just come forward and I'll read a few of these emails in the meantime. This is from Susan McAndrew, 101 Mallard Road. This was, this was hand-delivered, but well, I will read it tonight. It's quite long and so I will, fortunately, they gave me some bullet points. As a longtime resident who attended, this is Susan McAndrew, 101 Mallard Road, as a longtime resident who attended 2007 meetings and 2014 updates regarding the Village of Holland master plan, I trusted my township supervisors and zoning board to uphold these plans which do not permit convenience stores if they have a gas, if they have gas station islands. I now ask you to maintain that trust and take the leadership role in rejecting Provco Wawa's use of this land. My concerns, toxic air pollution from these gas pumps and tanks causing health problems for nearby neighborhoods, toxic land and water pollution from pumps and tanks damaging creeks and underground water systems, noise pollution from deliveries during Wawa's 24/7 hour, 24/7 operating hours, traffic congestion and accidents from proposed entrances, exits, traffic light placement, and the Buck Road Hill problem, increased traffic on residential development streets by vehicles trying to avoid these new patterns, some streets are without sidewalks and are used by children walking to the local school or waiting for school buses, crime and loitering problems in Wawa parking lots at night, including recent shootings and drag, and drug sales and usage, worsening of stormwater runoff problems. I ask any supervisor zoning board member solicited to recuse yourself if you have been connected to Wawa or Provco. Again, I ask my supervisors to uphold the Village of Holland overlay plan in your vote and do the right thing. Holland is not rich borough, but it's the gateway to Northampton. Perhaps grant money could be obtained to purchase this lot for green space, for this gateway. The Holland overlay district never got to promise sidewalks, lighting, and green acres. Please do not give us Provco Wawa with its gas station islands instead. Preserve the Village of Holland and the master plan honoring the planning commission. Vote no to Provco Wawa. Thank you. Hello, my name is Wayne Mills and I live at 90 Mallard Road in Holland, PA. A Super Wawa in Holland at this location will not make Holland more walkable as your supervisor Barry Moore campaigned on his promise. No one will walk to this Wawa, it's a gas station. By design, people will drive their cars to it. Buck and Holland roads are too heavily trafficked and too dark at night, they would be far too dangerous for residents to walk to the Super Wawa. Make no mistake about it, this business is a gas station first and foremost, the primary sales will come from gas, not convenience store sales, no matter who claims gas will be an accessory. This is absurd. Gas is not an accessory like a Hershey bar, it was meant to be primarily a convenience store, guess what? We have practically new Wawa convenience store in Holland appropriately placed in a thriving commercial business lot. The proposed Holland mega gas station Wawa is in a 95% residential location with neighborhoods filled with children at play. You'll have frustrated drivers cutting through the sides of roads of trying to avoid traffic gridlock because Holland Road will end in a cul-de-sac. All traffic is forced to Buck Road. Add the 18-wheelers, Wawa delivery trucks, gas tankers, workman trucks, school buses, and school bus stops, hurried customers and frustrated drivers on winding single-lane roads in each direction with blind hills on both Holland and Buck Roads, you have a recipe for disaster. A Super Wawa in Holland is like jamming a square peg in a round hole, it won't fit, say no to Super Wawa. Just have a few more. Hello, my name is Ann Russo and I live at 245 Sydney Road in Holland. Let's, let's fast forward 20 years from now, you all have moved on to other projects or have long retired from your position on the board. Provco will have moved on, it won't be your problem and it won't be theirs, but the Northampton Township Supervisor's time will be faced with the cleanup. They will need to come up with a mitigation strategy for dealing with the Holland Super Wawa's in an unused gas station brownfield because the majority of, majority of people are driving electric cars. We will have lived through years of more traffic, more accidents, and more convenience store crime that has bled into our neighborhoods. The convenience stores will be selling alcohol so they will always have business as a liquor store takeouts. A Super Wawa gets placed in every available commercial wedge of land next to residents and farms, there will be thousands more and, more angry and disillusioned township residents questioning why they are paying such high taxes to live next to a gas station. Eventually, the Super Wawa convenience stores will oversaturate Northampton Township in Bucks County and the stores will be severely underutilized because you will have just another, just, you will have another just a mile away in any direction. We will have more flooding as grass fields are replaced by asphalt parking lots of Super Wawa, we will have Super Wawa blight. Eventually, after 20 years of prolonged daily exposure to truck and vehicle exhaust, benzene, gas, and other carcinogens, nearby residents will be developing cancer at an increased rate because of the proximity to the Super Wawa that doesn't exist today. And those future supervisors will shake their heads and say, why did the township ever approve this back in 2021? Why didn't they listen to their planning commission? What in God's name were they thinking? I'm going to take a break, is Nina here? Is Karen here?
Karen.
All right, Karen, thank you. And your name and address for the record, please.
Karen Cavalli, I'm living at 124 Hope.
Can you move a little closer to the mic? Thanks.
Karen Cavalli.
You can push it down a little bit.
124 Hope Road, which is not Hope Lane, has been mislabeled on almost every plan that we've had here. And Hope Road is in Northampton Preserve and we're here to attempt to preserve the quiet use and enjoyment of our homes and our community. I've been living here for about six years, most of the people on our block and in our area have been here for 10 years, 20 years, 30 years. This is not, you know, we have two pages of waivers here to try to shoehorn this plan, monstrosity, into an area that clearly doesn't support it. And if you need all these waivers, I think you need to take a look at them, they're not technical, they are deeply personal. This is our lives. Things in your waivers mention things that are like infeasible to have only one entrance way. It's infeasible to move the dumpster. Well, it's impossible for us to move our homes. I don't see in the new plans where the school bus stop is, that's currently on Buck Road. It's right behind my house, it's on Buck. Where is that now? I have no clue. And this is in direct opposition to the Holland master plan and the village overlay. Holland is not rich borough. If there was a mistake in assuming that in the zoning, I think you can take a look at that and evaluate whether that was a mistake and correct it. The homes in Holland, or the site in Holland, is flanked on three sides by homes. Our residences are within 70 feet. And as, and I thank very much the supervisors who took the time to look at the plan, the new plan, and to ask the hard questions, particularly regarding the hours of operation as well as the site of the dumpster, not a dumpster, but a potential rat playhouse that is being sited for the front yard. So, I just want to thank you for your time, please listen to us, everybody here, I echo everyone's eloquent comments, particularly Barb Scannapico, and I, she's a neighbor and I've seen her as, as we've gone walking, but we haven't had a chance to really go through all these comments, but they're all echoed, listen to us. We are Northampton. I thank you very much and I urge you to vote no.
Joe, Joe, and then Reggie? You in the back? Okay, thank you. Joe, your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, thank you, I'm Joe Berkhimer from 361 Buck Road, Holland, PA.
Not the tax collector, right? I remember that.
Not the tax collector, yes.
I remember that.
Not the tax collector, thank you and thank you for hearing me here and also, first I'd like to thank the Duffy family, Chuck, Mr. Euchre, and so many environmental studies over these, people do a lot of due diligence and hard work to provide information about this, we know about the traffic impact and the environmental damage that this, that this is going to cause. You read the email about the Joan Rivers thing back in the 80s, I'm dating myself, I was a young guy in Richborough at the time, this is going to be the Hollywood East it was supposed to be promised, this is the height of Joan Rivers' popularity, she was on the Tonight Show and everything, and she got so mad that Northampton Township blocked her because they thought about, they put their community first, they, she, on national TV, I remember she called Northampton a bunch of hicks. So, we had that, so, but whatever courage was done in, in government at that time, and I, I, I really ask you guys to just please, you know, keep that ball rolling and keep that, you know, stand, stand strong against this billion-dollar corporation, I'm sure they can find some other community to ruin somewhere. And also, we did a protest Sunday over Remley's positive support, I, I, some, an older person was asking me questions about where the Wawa was going on and he said I lived here for 40 years and he might have to sell his, his property because he can't deal with that. There's so many, just people like me, I planned on, you know, retiring, I'd raise kids here and I'd hate to have to just go to pot and not be able to live here if I retire here. And I said, there's, there's a lot of people in my situation. And lastly, I'll just, just close on this, we know the traffic, this traffic situation and the cut-throughs, with the traffic so bad on Buck Road, obviously, I had young kids, they, they couldn't play on Buck Road, they had to, I used to tell them to go through the backyard to play on a lake view back when they were little. Well, Lake View's going to be a cut-through now with the Wawa, Hope's going to be a cut-through, Beverly's going to be a cut-through, Mallard's going to be a cut-through, there's going to be amazing traffic on those roads and there's kids there. And let's think of that amazing potential for a horrific tragedy with the child versus a, some speeding Wawa driver, someone late for work or whatever. It should trump any, any, any liability that could be caused from these gentlemen trying to sue us or whatever they're trying to do. That, that I think is, should be in closing, should be the number one concern of this, of this people, so we'll just close on that note, let's try to avoid that situation at all costs, thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. Reggie?
Hi, my name is Reggie Thomas, 140 Hope Road. Firstly, I appreciate the civility of this movement and the dedication professionalism that its members espouse. I trust the testimonies of the doctors present today over the, over any land developer in regards to the effects of benzene on human development. If I'm wrong, then the CDC needs a panel of lawyers and land developers. Again, my name is Reggie and I've spent nearly 25 years living in various parts of Philadelphia. Although I look back at it with fondness, I knew I wanted to get away from the hustle and bustle of city life. Holland Village was the answer. It was quieter and it lacked the architectural monstrosities that cities are associated with. Although it was more expensive than anticipated, it was our utopia, or a village more technically. Fast forward nearly 21 years later and we're facing a threat from a behemoth like Wawa. Our Board of Supervisors has let us down. In contrast, in contrast, Suffolk County, New York prioritizes its residents by meeting the community's needs and strictly applying rules to businesses. You don't see company buildings trying to garner more attention by building up and beyond the current companies. They intentionally maintain the look of the community. The role of the government is to serve the needs of its residents, so why don't our township supervisors adopt these guidelines? Why does Wawa even think that the current Wawa, which they updated more recently, needs to be replaced by a giant-sized version when it already meets the community's needs? How could they know better than the residents of the community that live here? Wawa reminds me of the old General Motors, which would apply one-size-fits-all strategy that ended up costing General Motors its prominence. The funny thing is, Wawa wants to build 16 pump stations when there's so much momentum for alternative energies. Instead, we will deal with light and environmental pollution and eventual blight when the Wawa model's no longer in step with emerging clean energy policies. In conclusion, the 16-pump Super Wawa is the wrong decision for our community. By setting a precedent here, you're giving Wawa carte blanche to build wherever it thinks it needs to be, even though there's so much opposition against it. Thank you.
There are four, this is Pam McCullough, Holland Road, looks like. There are four houses directly across the street from what appears to be the truck delivery location. How does the Wawa intend to protect these homes? There is no apparent buffer for sound or lighting and these properties, which include mine, are actually closer than any of the buffer locations. What consideration is Wawa giving the homes on Holland Road? Pam McCullough, this is 282 Holland Road. Roman Guravich, 180 Roxville Road. As someone who has lived in the area for several years, there are literally zero positive benefits and a plethora of negative consequences related to this proposal. Firstly, such a large development, especially one geared towards vehicles, would bring it an excess traffic into a small community, leading to increased pollution and more accidents. As such, the most important concern is that of the safety of myself and those around me. This does not even include the associated noise and light pollution that the development would bring. Next, this one development would single-handedly turn the area from a nice and quiet neighborhood into a busy commercial area. When my family purchased their house in the area, it was based on the zoning in place at the time and our anticipation and desire to live in a quiet residential area. This Wawa would fully ruin that and should not be allowed due to the zoning regulations upon which many residents made their decisions to purchase their homes. This is not- This is not street road, which is already a commercial zone. Had Wawa been here, we would not have purchased this house, which we currently live. Did I read this one earlier? Is this a duplicate?
No.
I think it is, too. I'm sorry, there's just, there's so many. I think I did, too. So we got a second shot at it. Stacy Williams, 16 North Marmot Drive, Holland. As a Holland resident for 20 years, I would like to express my opposition to the opposed Wawa, proposed Wawa. This area has been zoned light commercial, yet 12 gas pumps are considered conditional use. This is ridiculous. I've heard during past meetings the importance of updating fire stations and other buildings, which I agree with. I find it interesting that in doing so, several times it was mentioned to keep the design of these buildings aesthetically pleasing to maintain a suburban appearance. A Wawa in the middle of farmland completely blows this out of the water. It's opening the floodgates. A Wawa doesn't belong in the right property. Please vote against this monstrosity. This is Nicholas Rosso. Did you deliver this, Pam? Is this the one you delivered? And he couldn't be here? How come? I'm sorry.
He's signed, he won.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Happy to read it. Happy, I just wanted to make sure I have that. Hello, my name is Nicholas Rosso, and I live at 245 Sidney Road in Holland. I oppose the building of a Super Wawa at Buck and Roxsville Roads in Holland because it would be fiscally irresponsible to do so. No matter how much money the township is saving from Provco paying for the proposed road redesign and new traffic signal at Buck and Roxsville, the potential for lawsuits brought by residents against drivers, Wawa, Provco, and the township is very real. Our township children walk to Holland Elementary School or walk to and from their homes after getting off buses, coming from the school using Mallard, Heron, Beverly, Crescent, Morning Glory, Roxsville, Lakeside, Twist, and Hope Roads. All but Hope have no sidewalks. Our children play on these streets. A Super Wawa and a traffic signal will generate backup traffic, resulting in impatient, frustrated, and angry drivers looking for alternate routes to get out of the area. They will look to use Holland's side streets, especially in morning rush hour when they are trying to get to work on time early morning as children are heading for school or waiting for a school bus. Any child hit and injured by one of these drivers coming from the Super Wawa or any car accidents caused by drivers coming from this Wawa and recklessly driving on our streets will be the result of this Super Wawa. It will lead to resident lawsuits, not just on the offending driver, but also against Provco, Wawa, and this township for approving this ill-suited project. Why would you invite lawsuits, potential lawsuits? How is this fiscally responsible for our township? This is so unnecessary and avoidable. Please vote no on a Super Wawa at this site for this reason. Did you deliver, Troy Duffy?
Yeah, my youngest. He's away at school.
He's away at school. Okay.
Hello, my name is Troy Duffy. I live at 125 Hope Road in Holland. One of the many problems with this Super Wawa proposal is it is not being evaluated as a standalone project solely on its own merit, independent of any funding. Mr. Pellegrino told homeowners last December that Provco is paying for the road redesign and new traffic signal at Buck and Roxsville Roads, several million dollars. What if Provco was not paying? What if the township had to come up with the $5 million or whatever it would cost? Would you still be supportive of the project? You need to judge the Super Wawa strictly on the merits of whether it would benefit Holland, not influenced by who was paying for it. That is the wrong reason to approve a project. Because it appears that, because it appears that to get the new roads and new traffic light, you are willing to make a trade, willing to trade a Super Wawa for it. It's not clear the township wants, it's not clear the township wants the Wawa. It looks more like you want the signal and the new roads and can get those by approving the Super Wawa. Consider the Mill Race Inn has sat empty and blighted for 20 years. Breezy Point Swim Club has sat vacant for over five years. We've been talking about a light at Buck and Roxsville for years. No action on any of these, but now suddenly this project is moving at lightning speed. And why? Because there's funding for the roads and signal. Please make your decision for the right reasons and the merits of Super Wawa alone, not because someone else is paying for it.
Well, I think that covers all of the comments, both folks that signed up to speak while they're here and folks that were able to email in due to our current situation. I don't think, I appreciate all the, I'm sorry. I appreciate all the comments. I appreciate everybody's patience. It's been a long night, I know. We still have some work to do before we're done. We didn't really get a ton of questions, I don't think, that need to be addressed. There were mostly comments, straightforward comments, and I think that you'll hear from the board as we make our comments to the public, some of the, some of the questions or responses to your comments that you made earlier. So what we're going to do is, at this point, do, does the applicant have anything further? Mr. Van Louvene?
That's what I'm trying to.
Okay. If you want to wait, give a second, go ahead.
We're not going to offer rebuttal at this point, primarily because the comments were, as you said, comments, and we don't have, it'd be hard to do that after hearing comments for three hours, so it's.
I understand.
Not feasible, frankly.
Okay. Well, thank you for that, but we wanted to give you the opportunity to do that. All the comments tonight were important. They were important to the board. We're glad to hear them. I know many people think, for whatever reason, that we weren't glad to hear them, that they, we haven't been listening, and that's just not the case. At this point, it's time to get on with a vote and a motion, and I'm going to turn to Mr. O'Donnell to make a motion. And so here's how it's going, how we're going to do it. I'm going to ask everybody to please let us get through this, try to stay quiet, no hooting, hollering, yelling, because it's just going to slow the process down. It's 11:30 already. And then we'll get through it.
Just one bit of business before Frank makes his motion.
Oh, thank you.
I just want the record to reflect that among the items reviewed by the board and available to the board tonight as part of this hearing are the waiver letter that was received by the township from Bowler Engineering dated September 3, 2021. The Gilmore Associates review letter dated September 21, 2021. The Penonius Associates review letter dated September 15, 2021. The McMahon Associates review letter dated September 17, 2021. The Northampton Township Planning Commission memorandum dated April 15, 2021. The Bucks County Planning Commission review letter dated March 13, 2020. The, the, the application, the plan set specifically for this evening, but not limited to, a copy of the site plan, which is sheet number C-301, which is sheet 6 of 37 of the plan set for this project, last revised September 3, 2021, and of course, a copy of the Holland Village master plan.
Thank you. Can you please go back out to where you were, keep the room in a socially-distanced environment so that we can finish our business? Thank you. Please.
And also presented this evening, and also a part of the documents available to the board were the photographs and the photographic renderings offered by the applicant, prepared by 3GHC Architects. And I believe that's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 photographs or images of the potential
Thank you. Mrs. Silver, I think, is coming back in. We'll give her a second. Some concern for safety, that's why we asked the room to get cleared back out again. Okay. Taking a quick break. Sorry, guys. She had to go. We'll give that a second.
Do you have any questions about the Holland Road bumpers and houses?
The comment's, the comment's over. We're back to the board. Okay, so the way, the way we're going to do it is typically how it would work is if there's a motion, and if someone seconds it, that makes it a valid motion, and then there'll be board discussion. That's our opportunity to discuss amongst ourselves in public and make our comments. And then I will call for a roll-call vote. What I'd really ask is, let us make our comments. Some may agree with them, some may disagree with them. Please let everybody get finished. We were very patient with everybody for you. We tried very hard not to interrupt everybody. Please do the same for us, and we can try to wrap this up tonight. Mr. O'Donnell, thank you. I'm okay if we take our masks off during this, just so we can, if you feel comfortable, so that everybody can hear us.
I move for denial of the preliminary final plan of subdivision and land development for Wawa SLD 20-2 due to the outstanding items on the Township Engineers' Review Letter dated September 21, 2021, the Township Planner's Review Letter dated September 15, 2021, and the Township Traffic Engineers' Review Letter dated September 17, 2021. In addition, the requested waivers are denied as identified in the Bowler Engineering Correspondence dated September 3, 2021.
I second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and we'll now have a board discussion. We'll start with Mr. O'Donnell.
I just want to remind people that this motion is a denial of this plan. It doesn't address the issue of a use by right. It is a denial of this plan. I just want to go over a few things. I think you hear a lot about waivers. Where does that come from? What does it mean? In our ordinance, it says, "If any mandatory provisions of this, of this chapter are shown by the applicant developer to be unreasonable and cause undue hardship as they apply to any subdivision or land development plan," and this is the particular, this is the important part here of this piece, I think, "'because of peculiar conditions pertaining to the land in question, or where an alternative standard can be demonstrated to provide equal or better results, the Board of Supervisors may modify or waive such mandatory provisions so that substantial justice may be done and the public interest secured, provided that such modification or waiver will not have the effect of nullifying the intent or purpose of this chapter." You heard me ask about waivers earlier tonight. I also, since this was in 1989, last update in 1989, I decided to take a look and see what the language was in the municipality, Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code. The language is similar, but a little bit more up-to-date. It states that "The governing body may grant a modification of the requirements of one or more provisions if the literal enforcement will, will exact undue hardship because of peculiar conditions pertaining to the land in question, provided that such modification will not be contrary to the public interest and that the purpose and intent of the ordinance is observed." It's my view, after listening to everything and to looking at all the material, that a number of these waivers are not needed because of peculiar conditions pertaining to the land, but rather by the decision of the applicant to submit a plan that is too large to fit on the property without waivers. To allow waivers that are based on the plan rather than conditions pertaining to the land, in my view, would be contrary to the public interest, to the purpose and intent of the ordinance. I have some other pieces of this that we really talked about, we briefly touched on, but I, I just want to talk about a little bit. I also have serious concerns about the change in the road network in the Village of Holland. I've had those concerns for a long period of time, and I have expressed them at different times. This plan calls for Holland Road to curve south, on the south side of the proposed store, and connect to Buck Road at a stop sign. The remaining portion of the current Holland Road would be blocked off just past the last house on that section of road. Since no cul-de-sac is planned, it would be a dead-end street. I believe that would violate Section 22-403 of the Township Code, dealing with dead-end streets. Now, the intent of the road design initially in the Holland plan is to relieve traffic congestion in the village. The realignment of Holland Road is listed as Alternative E in the Holland Village Master Plan. Figure 26 of that plan shows a traffic light at the new intersection of Holland and Buck Roads rather than the stop sign shown in the developer's plan. There was, there was a modeling study done as part of the Holland master plan, and the modeling proves that this intersection, it says, the modeling, yeah, let me try that again. It's getting late, folks, I'm sorry. The conclusions of that modeling simulation stated that, and I quote from the Holland master plan, "Any improvements to the road network must begin at the Buck Road, Old Bristol Road intersection." The modeling proves that this intersection is the main choke point for traffic in the study area. Because of this, any improvements that don't include improving the Buck Road, Old Holland, Old Bristol Road intersection first may only have minimal effect in reducing traffic congestion." And that was when they were going to put a traffic light there instead of a stop sign. PennDOT now has that intersection, including the widening of the bridge over Mill Creek, on its list, and we could see action on that in 2022 or 2023. To me, it makes sense to review traffic issues once that project has been completed to determine the value of the other changes to the current Buck Road, Holland Road intersection. So therefore, I am not supporting the proposed realignment, which is an integral part of the developer's plan. And the last thing I want to say is, there've been a lot of comments tonight, or some comments tonight, about the comparison between the Holland, what would be the Holland Wawa and the Richborough Wawa. You know, well, it may be true that the proposed building and gas pumps are the same as what exists in Richborough. The Richborough Wawa is part of the Addisville Common Shopping Center, which was developed under the provisions of a stipulation signed in November 2014 that resolved the lawsuit involving the property. There is no stipulation for this plan. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Frank. Kim?
Yes. First, you know, we have been listening to everybody for many months, and we hear everything you say. But I did want to set the record straight on a few points that I've heard over the last few months. We did not solicit Wawa to come to Northampton. They sought us out. Number two, we all care about Holland. The bridge project and the new firehouse had been in the works long before the Wawa project came along. I work in Holland. I drive Buck Road every day. My pharmacy, cleaners, dentist, they're all in Holland. So when people say that we don't care, that is completely untrue. My name is on the Holland master plan, but it is just My name is on the Holland Master Plan, but it is just that, a plan, a guide, a wish list. It is not a rule and not a law. It is a vision. We don't own every property, and we can't tell people what to do with their property if it's within the law. Now, on page 65 of this plan, in the pertaining to Buck Road/Holland Road Intersection Realignment Enhancement, "Another potential redevelopment scenario could involve redeveloping the site to maintain the existing gas station and provide a commercial building below the nearly created intersection. This option may prove to be more appealing if Wawa is interested in redeveloping the site." To me, this would be the best scenario for our community, but like I said before, this is a plan. It's not a law. I also know that years ago, the residents fought against a Rite Aid being built in this parcel. So however this goes, Profco or not, I want everyone to realize something is going to be developed there, and it's not going to be a park. This is not a perfect vote. I have been listening to everyone. I have heard all the arguments against it, and I've listened to some who quietly say they want it. I have nothing against Wawa. They have been a good neighbor to our community in Richborough. We have looked at every nuance of the project. Much of the zoning and land use laws were put in place in the '50s and '60s, when a lot of farmers started selling their land when farmers' farming was no longer profitable. Many people live in homes that were originally farms. The township had to make adjustment in our zoning laws to adapt to what was happening in the community in the '80s and '90s. So here we sit in 2021, and we have zoning laws that are dictated by state laws and reflect what has actually happened to our community in the last 60 years. These laws were the vision of people who sat before us in these seats. The Wright property has been a commercial piece of property for a very long time, and I'm sure the Wrights had no inkling that a Super Wawa would want their land when they first purchased this property. Now, I have consulted our professionals, and they tell me that the law is not on our side. They cautioned me that there could be consequences. There can be significant legal costs if this matter goes to court. But in my life, I live by a simple rule. Can I lay my head on my pillow at night? Can I walk into the senior center to teach my class and know that I did the right thing for our residents? I do not support this plan.
First of all, it's too cold in here for me to sleep. And also, I want to thank everyone who gave comments in a very respectful way. Since 2016, we have lived in an atmosphere of misinformation. Misinformation continued during every public comment portion of our meeting concerning the Profco land development. Jewish holidays start at sundown and end at sundown. After sundown, it is no longer a Jewish holiday, and a meeting can take place. Criminal activity at Richborough Wawa is not happening. I checked with the police -- with our police chief. Our country club is 124 acres of beautiful, open space. Catering is the way for us to be able to keep it open space. Not using Lot 2 at the Wright property is because of grading reasons, not because Wawa just decided that. There are homes all around the Richborough Wawa. I know a few people who live there. The gas station at the corner of Buck and Holland has been there for over 25 years. Gas tanks are not built today like they were then, and no one complained. There's no pollution in the Iron Creek the entire time. Benzene is a problem, but no one has ever complained about a gas station. Also, the dumpster, which I agree with you shouldn't be, but it's 140 feet from the closest home, the houses, 212 feet from gas pumps to the nearest house, not 70 feet. The Holland Master Plan was prepared by the Bucks County Planning Commission with the township asking them to do it. This is to serve as a guiding document. The Wright property is described in the plan with the sentence that the Wright family is interested in improving their property. It says, "Potential redevelopment of the Wright site. Alternate 1: townhouses and park. Alternate 2: all townhouses. Alternate 3: commercial development. Alternate 4: commercial with residential." I didn't think that you just pick -- cherry picked what you thought would go. The improvement of the intersection at Old Bristol Road and Buck Road, which is already planned, as Mr. O'Donnell said, will improve the traffic. And yes, I agree with him that that should happen first, that the bridge over Mill Creek should be finished before we decide on realigning any roads. And yes, to the young woman who spoke very nicely and very eloquently, we are -- they are going. PennDOT is going to widen the bridge, and they are going to -- I have no idea how they're going to do it with the houses close by. The Holland Master Plan does refer to the realignment. I am very disappointed in the way that we were treated up here. We have been volunteering for our community in every way over the years. We have accomplished many positive things. My personal opinion is not what I have to look at this. I have to do what I feel I legally have to do. I do not wish to be threatened, and I have been. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. So I do have a few comments. I won't be long. It's late, and we'll get on. We'll get on with this. But there are a few things I want to say. I, too, would like to thank the many people that were very nice, very respectful, that reached out to me by phone. Not very many emails, but stopped me in the street. I drive a very recognizable car, as most of you know. And it was -- one time, in the shopping center, this is an exemplary meeting that I had with a couple. I don't know them. They might even be here. I don't think so. And they said -- they stopped me because I got out of my car, and they said, "Hey, we don't want a Holland Wawa. We live near there, not right near there, but we don't want a Holland Wawa." But then they said, "But thanks. Thanks for volunteering. We know it's a tough decision, and thanks for doing what you do." And that made it good, because we were not treated super well by some. I think you know that. We were asked to come visit the site, and we did. And we got yelled at from the street, and pictures were taken of us and posted on social media, horrible pictures with things that had nothing to do with us. So the very people that asked us to visit the site came out, yelled at us, and took pictures. You know who that is. You know what that is.
I didn't say that.
Yeah? Well, look at social media, Mr. --
I didn't say that.
This is my time.
Okay.
This is my time.
It is yours.
Thank you. You were there.
Yeah, I was.
And it happened right before you got there. It was not you. I will say that. But it wasn't -- but those who know, know who it was. My point isn't that it happened. My point is that, why? It wasn't necessary. We haven't taken any action yet, yet you're angry with us. Be angry after an action is taken. Then you're angry, but you're wanting us to do something, and we were not treated very well. But I'm just not -- I'm not going to go on about that, but it is important. The other thing I wanted to say is, I actually lived in Holland for many years. I don't know if anybody knew that. My kids all went to Hillcrest Elementary. They went to Holland Middle School, and they went to Council Rock South. I loved living in Holland. And I never thought of Holland as a second-class place at all, and I never thought of Holland as a stepchild. Using the term "stepchild" as a demeaning, disparaging comment is horrible. I have stepchildren, and other people on this board sitting up here have stepchildren too, and I love them dearly. And to continue to use that word during these public comment meetings was just not appropriate. And I'm sorry and saddened by that. Now, I'll get on to what I have to say. Nobody here made any decisions prior to this. Most of the board here worked very hard at trying to look at all the different angles and all the different pieces of this. I like the Holland Master Plan. I've heard about the Holland Master Plan a lot, and I read it, and it's a good plan. I understand it's a vision, but I think it does outline what a Holland village would and could look like. And I also am smart enough to recognize that not every single thing in that plan can always happen the way it is, but it is a vision, and it was done with public participation. And I hope you all have noticed that public participation is important to us. That's why we set this room up, and the other room, and the emails. We tried our best to make sure that everybody had our voice. And I can say very confidently that through this entire process, every meeting, everybody that wanted to speak got to speak. I rarely cut people off. I let most people go over their time, understanding that you're passionate about this, and it does affect your life. So I hope you all see that this is an important issue to us, and I'm going to call a vote, and I'm going to call a roll call vote, and I would ask you, please, to wait until the vote is complete before you make any comments or get up or to where the case may be. Okay? So --
Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to point out that a yes vote is a vote for the denial of the plan.
Right.
A no vote is a vote to deny this motion.
And also, you have to have three votes in order for the motion to pass.
Right.
And there's only four of us up here.
Okay. So a yes vote is a rejection of the application. Okay? I'll start with the person that made the motion. Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Dr. Rose?
Yes.
Ms. Silver?
Obstain.
And I vote yes. The motion passes. That concludes the hearing for tonight. Thank you all for your patience.